Consent agenda, I understand we're gonna, we need to add one item. Mr. Frue, can you mention what that is?
It's a resolution accepting bid and authorizing the execution of the contract. Young and McQueen construction and demolition with landfill.
Can you hear it, Jerry?
It's a matter of the board's art project and funding of this except.
Sorry, we can't hear back here.
Okay. So if it's, uh, we came with the board, we'll have, um, we'll ask for a little bit of additional information on that. If it seems like we're all consensus, we can approve it as part of the consent agenda. If we're not, then we'll decide what to, what to do to get more, more information. Sound good? All right. Any other questions about items on the consent agenda?
Could you repeat that so we know what you said?
Um, we're gonna, we're gonna add an item to the consent agenda about, about a landfill bid that we received. And we're, we're gonna share additional information about it in, in a few minutes.
Thank you.
There's no other items on the consent agenda. Then, under good news, we're gonna have an update on youth opioid summit report. Following that, we're gonna have an update on the North Carolina Real ID. Following that, we'll have a proclamation of April as Child Abuse Prevention Month. Commissioner Beltrano read that resolution. We have no public hearings this evening. Under the county manager's report will be the Community Child Protection, Child Fatality Prevention Team Report. And Jennifer Mullins will make that presentation. We also have a report on the Family Justice Center, and Julie Clipmickelson will give that report. Following that, we'll have discussion on the ambulance franchise. And Mike Frue will start that conversation. And we have no new business or board appointments this evening, so the final item after that will be additional public comment. We will take public comment on any items that we vote on earlier in the evening, so any items that are gonna be voted on, we'll take public comment. And then during the general public comment period, folks can give comments on anything that we haven't already covered earlier in the evening. All right. Any other questions about any items on the agenda? All right, seeing that, I think we're ready to begin the meeting, so we can roll the beginning video mass. Thanks. Good evening. Thank you to everyone who has joined us for the April 17th, 2018 meeting of the Buncombe County Commission. We'll call the meeting to order. And let's begin the meeting with a pledge of allegiance. Please rise and join us in the pledge. Every year on April 22nd, people from all walks of life, from around our country and from countries around the world, celebrate Earth Day. This is a day for people to come together to celebrate the creation that sustains life on our world and to recognize our responsibility to be stewards of the creation. As we gather this afternoon on this beautiful day, thankful that it seems that spring has finally arrived again, let us remember how fortunate we are to live in these mountains in this very special part of the creation. Let's have a moment of silence before we start our work this evening for silent prayer and appreciation for our mountain home that we have inherited and to dedicate ourselves to caring for it for our children and for those who will come after. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. And thank you again for joining us for the commission meeting this evening. I'd ask that everyone please silence your cell phones. Rival time. All right, and I'd like to read the ethics reminder to the board. In accordance with the coded ethics adopted by the board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda the outcome of which would have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any board member? Does any board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the board today? There being the none, all three of us have a duty and obligation to vote on all items that are voted on by the board tonight. All right, we now move to the consent agenda, and I will ask Mr. Frue to again share some information with us about the item that you asked that we add to the agenda. Yeah, please come up and talk us through the issue.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we're here today to ask the board to accept the lowest responsible responsive bid on the new construction project about to occur up at the landfill, which this board previously approved for the project and the funding. What we're, what we're trying to do, this is really sort of a kickoff for, it's been the tradition of the former county managers to use various elements of the budget ordinances to, to simply confer power to the chairman or county manager or either of them to accept bids for construction projects once they're part of the budget and they've been approved by the board. When you, when you read the general statutes carefully and you, and we're moving to take away those elements from the budget ordinance, we have situations where we generally have a needs assessment, approvals by the board for funding, then we put together the bid package, and we evaluate and assess the bids, and then come to the board for a formal bid acceptance. And this situation here of the lowest responsible responsive bid for the project is Young and McQueen for $1,187,770. If you have any particular questions about the project, we have our director of the landfill, Chip Jingles, here today, or perhaps Jim Homme could answer. But that's what we're asking for approval. It's previously approved by the board for the project and the funding. And this is just to accept the bid and authorize the execution of the contract that we received.
So Chairman, I would suggest, given the short notice of this and the detailed answer that we're receiving here, that we, we, we've agreed to accept it into the consent, correct?
Yes. Well, again, well, we're talking about our agenda, so we certainly don't have, but we don't have to approve it. I mean, if there's, if, I think we'll only approve it if it is a consent item.
Well, you know, what I was gonna suggest is we put it on the consent agenda, but once it's on the consent agenda, we move it to the, to the main part of the meeting so that this information will be provided.
Yes, sir. It's reasonable, it's appropriate to add it under new businesses. If we can do that?
Okay. All right, so is that a motion to add this item to the regular agenda for the evening?
Yes.
All right. All right, there's a motion in the second to add this to the regular agenda item, and any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, we'll add it to the regular agenda. Why don't we take it up, um, why don't we take it up under new business? Thank you. Any other items? Commissioner Beterard?
Yes, I just wanna take a moment. The final item on the consent agenda is the Community Child Protection Council. I'm a career community member who served on that, and just wanna take a moment to appreciate and recognize the work of all the community members and different agencies that serve.
I had my microphone off. Who serve on the JCPC. There's a lot of, it's a very involved process, and folks take that role very seriously, and there are county staff involved with that, and so many different partner organizations. So just wanted to hear, you all to hear from us, and thank you and appreciation for that service.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. The next item on our agenda is the Youth Opioid Summit Report, and Zona Pope with Community Health, HHS, and Imani Mosley of Asheville High will give us a report on the success of this summit. So thank you for being with us, and please join us at the panel, and we'd love to hear from you.
Good evening. Yes, last Thursday, we had the opportunity to finally host a six or seven months in the making student summit on opioids. So we were so fortunate to have the buy-in and support of our Buncombe County principals and administrators who in August said, yes, we wanna welcome this in-school support, we wanna welcome students to be able to have focus groups, to really be able to tell us what do they know about opioids, and how do they wanna get involved in the solution. So throughout the fall, we had our Mayhex school nurses who helped support student focus groups where they really shared what they know, what they don't know, and also helped to carve out what a summit would look like. And that's exactly what happened on Thursday. We had students from 14 different area schools, that included Madison County, primarily Buncombe County, every high school in our county, as well as East Henderson. So in addition to helping to kind of carve out what that curriculum would look like, they also were our primary media managers. And so from holding the camera to developing the, our logo for the conference, as well as actually doing social messaging on various platforms, this was all student-driven. Shortly, I'll introduce Imani Mosley. Not only was she one of our core spokes students, as also a media manager, she's also going to be entering this fall Central University, and she's also with Asheville High. So we were so fortunate to have such well-rounded, such talented, and such engaged students there. So the big takeaway is what happens next? So I just wanna share with you three outcomes. We produced entry and exit polls for the students, so that day, they told us immediately what do they know on about 10 different measures about opioids as well as addiction. Three important numbers. So in terms of is it safe to share, we had an increase in 22% of understanding from our students in the dangers of sharing medications. In terms of the morbidity rates, or excuse me, the mortality rates, they learned that actually there's more people that are dying from opioid addictions rather than car accidents. And there was a 14, 45% increase in awareness on that. And then finally, in terms of the addiction, for that, is it hard to kick the habit? We had a 27% increase in awareness on what the risk of addiction is. So thank you so much, and I'm going to go to the floor to Imani.
Thank you.
First, I'd like to say thank you all for letting me report back on the student summit to you. So a little background about it, we really started in like 2017 during the fall to planning and all the other things, and myself being involved in the School Health Advisory Council for Asheville City Schools in Buncombe County, I'm the student representative from Asheville City Schools. And from there, I was recruited to be in the focus group to help give more input about the summit. And then during night spring, on Thursday, we finally had the summit where I was the opening speaker and also worked as a media manager as well as a participant. And as we know, that opioid epidemic is impacting everyone, and in effort to learn and engage the students as well as adults, we decided to do the summit. And as a high school student, I felt like it was really that we should focus with the students because becoming epidemic are starting to affect the, the more innovative adults. Because personally, I had, I know someone who had overdose and passed away from cannabis overdose. And so here's an overview of the summit, starting from the team, why the variety of students were chosen by school administrators to participate in the focus groups, and the focus groups were led by the school nurses and through our schools. So the survey tracks followed the head, heart, and framework, and the head was to learn and learn the adverse psychological and biological impact of opioids. The heart was to how it can impact your dreams and your relationships with other people. And hand was helping to get informed and knowing when to say something to someone if they have an issue. The logo was made by Noah Watson Pratt, and was also a high school student. And leading up to the event, myself and videos just stepped up to the role as media managers. Myself, I was in charge of social media, so I had Twitter, Instagram, and I was in charge of like making a geo story on Snapchat, like when anybody ever in the area that I was at the summit could participate and post to that Snapchat story to highlight anything that they found that's interesting. And we made a Snapchat filter, and we developed hashtags that we could use for tweets on Facebook and on Instagram to try to reach our governors, then even like people on State Council as well as some of the commissioners. We were also encouraged to engage students from other schools, so a big thing that we did was we tried to mix people up as best as we could by giving them random numbers and assigning them to have, to talk to people that were outside. So there were 80 students there. This is our first summit, the first one in North Carolina, and which is, we were really ecstatic to have 80 students from 14 schools there. They were all from Buncombe County, Asheville City, and Madison. And then we all got the chance to learn more about each other, and not only like each other's schools, but as well as like the health policies that all of our schools have and how to bring them together. Something that I found really interesting was that I was able to learn more about the psychological dealings with opioids and why people take them, and then like what's they take them, what they can do to your body and how people do. And that was really eye-opening, and we also got the chance to have listened to many people who had died over an opioid addiction, and listen to how their lives were impacted and how they're starting to rebrand themselves and get their lives together. The students were encouraged to share their experience at the summit with their leaders at state and national level. The social media managers and students posted, and after the event, were likely to tweet about the U.S. Surgeon General, Dr. Jerome Adams, and State Attorney General Ross Strahan, and NCB HHS Secretary, Dr. Megan Oden. So we really made it to like a video act, and I was happy that I could be on the board to spread the word. And we also wanted to open it up to see if you all would think that we can continue this and make it an even bigger summit. Like for nature, as the years goes on, because we're trying to like increase everybody's knowledge about it, and instead of reaching only western of Carolina, we're reaching the whole of Carolina. So thank you for this opportunity to report on the summit, and any questions that you all have, I'll be happy to answer.
I was sorry to miss it, but thank you for your initiative and the vision and what you all are doing. You probably say somebody's life by doing what you're doing, so thank you.
Do you have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Brilliant, and much needed, so thank you very much. It's one of, it's one of this group's, you know, most important priorities as a governing body, and we know that, that the most powerful solutions are gonna be found within the community in efforts like this, so thank you so much for keeping it up. All right. The next item on our agenda is the Real, the North Carolina Real ID update. And Lake King with the North Carolina Department of Transportation will explain what the NC Real ID that will make it work in or visit a military base or other federal facilities. And beginning in 2020, federal agencies will enforce tougher security standards at airport check-ins, federal buildings, military installations, and nuclear sites. So an important topic, community, of course, so thank you for being with us.
Thank you. I actually am not Lake King. I'm curious if we'll have joined with Lake King today. No, no problem. We are, we're too. Thank you so much for giving us some time. I'm one of the public relations officers for the Department of Transportation, and I have been so fortunate to be assigned to work with the Division of Motor Vehicles. In the interest of time, I won't keep you all too terribly long. As you mentioned, Chairman, it is imperative for travel, for visiting any military bases, federal facilities, to check for identification, and as you indicated, no fear in our plans. Following the September 11 terrorist attacks, the federal government passed a law called the Real ID Act that requires every state to issue identification that meets a stricter requirement for issuing any IDs, driver licenses, or learner's permits. The Real ID Act is overseen by the Department of Homeland Security. Can't stress enough that it is a federal law and not the state of North Carolina asking you all to provide additional documentation. The increase in security comes from the second step of reaffirming and verifying the identity and the residency of every single cardholder. It also includes several security features in the new card that also strengthens the security. Beginning October 1st of 2020, if you don't have what is now called a Real ID, you will have to provide additional documentation anytime you fly or visit any federal facility. You know you have a Real ID if it has a star in the upper right-hand corner of your driver license or identification card. We just started issuing these in May of 2017. We have now issued over 400,000 Real IDs across the state. Here in Asheville, it is consistently in our top 15 offices of the 114 offices in the state of North Carolina for issuing Real IDs. But we need about 4 million people to go back to the driver license office and get a Real ID, because we expect 4 million people in North Carolina will be affected by these new identification requirements. Real ID is available again for any driver license, learner permit, or identification card. The key takeaway, if you wanna continue to travel and just use your license for flying or getting on a military base, you're gonna need to get this star added to your license. Without it, you will start, you will be required to provide additional documentation every time you visit. Again, the security pieces, all licenses are now issued from one location. You will no longer get it in the office's same day anymore. That's one of those many security features that Real ID provides. The card, as you know, was redesigned from the blue card to now what we, I think, have called a pink card. Every state has a similar design, colors are different, but they have 14 security features that make these cards less likely to be duplicated and used in any fraudulent manners. Every single DMV employee that might ever touch your driving record, whether it's an examiner, examiner, or the staff that works in the backend that verifies your identification, they all had to be background checked, and they all had to have their fingerprints taken to make sure that they are allowed to touch your personal identification. So this new card again is a heightened security measure for everyone. So if you don't get a star and you visit the driver license office, or if you have visited the office since we started issuing in May of 2017, you probably received a card that says not for federal identification if you didn't bring in the appropriate documents. And I'll run through those very quickly in just a couple of slides. If you renewed your license online or, or the duplicate license online, you probably received a card that said not for federal identification because you did not visit the driver license office to bring your, your documents for a Real ID. Again, you're gonna have to plan ahead if you don't have the star on your license, and if you don't have a passport. Majority of North Carolinians don't have passports, so they are going to maybe be affected by this new law. You'll need to call TSA every time you get ready to fly to make sure you have the right documents. If you have to go to a military base for any reason, you'll need to contact them before you visit, and there is no standard list of additional documentation that they accept. So Real ID, a lot like Visa, is accepted everywhere, but for anyone without a Real ID, you're gonna have to check in in advance every single time you visit. I can't stress that bad enough, to make sure you have the appropriate documents, because we hate for someone to show up to Disney, to the airport, and go take their family to Disney on October 2nd, 2020, and parents don't have the right documents to get through TSA, and the whole family's turned away, you won't be able to fly. So that's part of the reason why we're here today in doing this sort of outreach, to let people understand, to help people understand how important this new identification is. It's not very different from what the DMV is always required. The only real difference is a second proof of your address. The DMV has always asked that you prove your identity in your day of birth. They've always asked that you prove that you're allowed to be in the United States, that you have a social security number, and that you live in North Carolina, but now we need to see that second proof. And there's some specific documents that the federal government will allow. You need to bring in one document, again, that identifies who you are and when you were born, and that you're allowed to be in the United States, a certified birth certificate or passport. If you were from a state that is already issuing Real ID and you have a Real ID, say from Ohio, you can use that to help establish your identity. And if you weren't born here, you still are eligible to get a Real ID, you just need to bring in one of these documents. Certified documents are very important for your birth certificate. It has to be the one with the raised seal. It cannot be the high school version that you got as a bento with your footprint on it, that will not be accepted in the driver license office. And if your name has changed, you've written your birth certificate and your name is no longer the same, if you've been married or anything else, or adopted and your name was changed, you need to bring some documents that verify that name change. Again, getting a Real ID is a lot like getting a license for the very first time, because you have to establish again who you are and where you live. So ladies, we need to find those certified marriage certificates or order movements, okay? Proof of your social security number or your social security card or one of these three documents that has your full name and social. And we just finished filing taxes, so your W-2 would suffice or a 1099 if you were retired. Any two documents with your current address, that could be your North Carolina license if your address is up to date there, your vehicle registration card, a utility bill or a cable bill. Military orders will suffice for this, but you just need two documents that verify your current North Carolina address. Miners that might be traveling alone, they're going to visit grandparents, they're not accompanied by an adult, and they are going to fly in the airport, they will need to furnish a Real ID or additional documentation if they don't have a passport. We recognize that they don't, they don't have a lot of mail, they don't have bills. And for those that are getting their license for the first time, they might not have a license or ID card already, so we came up with a list of documents that would take care of the residency piece of Real ID. Any correspondence from the scouts would work, or if they're owning any athletic teams, you can bring that in as long as it has their name and their address, school records, their report cards would work, magazine subscriptions. If you filed your taxes and you claim them as a dependent and you listed their name, your tax return could assist with that. Hunting and fishing license would work for minors, it would not work for you. They can use theirs, you should have more documents to establish your, your residence, but we recognize this might be one additional piece that would help any minors. It's also a great way to establish their identity early to prevent any identity fraud for them later on. So one of the things we wanted to do to try to make getting a Real ID a little bit easier is allow you to make an appointment at your local driver license office, or if you're on the eastern part of the state, for the summer at the beach, you can make an appointment for the next state office. But any driver license office, you can call DMV call center to make an appointment. If you ever see one of our mobile offices out at the Mountain State Fair or at the State Fair in Raleigh, or any other festival or event, you're more than welcome to take your documents with you and be serviced there. The costs are no different. Real ID is not anything extra when you get your license. If you are renewing, your license is the same cost. If you're not ready to renew, but you want to get ahead of those 4 million people that are gonna go into the, the next two years, it will cost you $13, which is the same cost as a duplicate, just to have the card reprinted and mailed to you. Again, call. Again, cards are issued from one place now. You will get it in the mail. You will not get it same day, so you need to allow 15 to 20 days to receive it by mail. So this is why we're here, to ask that you check the expiration dates on your licenses or identification cards. If you have children going into driver's ed, let them go ahead and take their documents with them when they get their learner permit and get ahead of the game. Really quickly, we do have some brochures to leave here that have the documents included. If you go to ncrid.gov, all the information is also listed there. You cannot get a Real ID online until you get your first Real ID in the office. After that, you can renew online, you can order it if it's online, and that star will stick with your license or identification card indefinitely. Any questions?
Right now, that's a lot of great information on the process and what different types of places you would need it for. So thank you very much for the update.
Great work. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The next item on our agenda is a proclamation of April as Child Abuse Prevention Month. And Amy Purdy with the Mountain Child Advocacy Center will accept the proclamation, and Commissioner Joe Belcher will present.
That's my name.
Again, flexible, so thank you for being with us.
I appreciate it. So I have several commissioners, including myself, that have the opportunity to sit at each year and replacing the pinwheels out by Andrew. And it's such a wonderful time. We've got different groups of children that come through, but the greatest thing about was the consistency of all those children, and one of their innocence, and that's what the pinwheels shows. And just for the record, how many of the kids have a pinwheel out in Andrew? Surely, I'm going to ask that question, but how many of you have a pinwheel out in Andrew? There we go, there we go. So the County of Buncon proclamation for Child Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas the problem, child abuse and neglect affects many of Buncon County's children and has reached epidemic proportions in North Carolina with over 160,000 children reported abuse, neglected, or dependent last year. Whereas last year, the Buncon County Department of Health and Human Services had over 4,140 children reported abuse, neglected, or dependent. Whereas preventing child abuse and neglect is the responsibility of all citizens, and every child has a right to a safe, healthy, nurturing environment. Whereas community action is needed to help prevent child abuse so all children have the opportunity to reach their potential. Whereas it is vital that we join forces with the Child Protection Team of Buncon County and the Mountain Child Advocacy Center to reach out to parents and children to prevent child sexual abuse and neglect, strengthen families and children that have experienced abuse. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Board of Commissioners for the County of Buncon as follows, that the month of April 2018 be proclaimed Child Abuse Prevention Month in Buncon County, that this board does hereby call upon every citizen to join the child protection organizations, groups, and individuals in observance of the month with appropriate programs and activities, and that this proclamation be effective upon its adoption adopted this the 17th day of April 2018. A Board of Commissioner, County of Buncon, signed.
Thank you all. I'll just say a few words, and no, I'm not Amy Purdy, but I'm on the B-team, I guess, for tonight, so I appreciate the opportunity. And I wanted to thank all the commissioners that were able to make it out the other day. I know it's the middle of the business day, but those of you who were able to come out for the pinwheel with all the kids, they really enjoyed that. And to acknowledge all the folks that can't be up here with me right now, there's some in the audience, but they let me come up here by myself, that's okay. And all the folks from law enforcement, from DHHS, from the school system, all the folks in the community that deal with this issue 365 days of the year, as unfortunately it is. If you look at our numbers, Commissioner Belcher said about 4,100 or so, that comes out to about 14 calls a day, every day of the year. But you also have to remember that those are the calls that come into DSS, and they are not a single portal for all abuse and neglect cases in the county. Actually, about nationally, they average probably 25, 30% of other calls that are not caretaker or child-on-child cases are other cases that go fall to DSS. So you could really look at a number in this county around 5,500 per year. And we have some incredible folks doing great work. I really appreciate the opportunity to work with both the nonprofit folks and our public folks who are on the front lines every day of the year with this. If I could say or advocate for anything, it would be to continue to support the work of folks at DHHS and law enforcement. We just don't have enough folks to deal with this day in and day out. As Commissioner Beech Farrar and I were just in a meeting earlier, talking today, talking about the need is much greater than the resources that we have to match it. So I appreciate your ongoing support and continue to look at our ability to support even more services. We have some really exciting prevention work going on right now because the reality is my job is to put myself out of a job, and that's the one thing if I can be successful as a professional is to do that. So I thank you again. I'm going to be brief because it's Child Abuse Prevention Month, in about 45 minutes, I've got to throw the first pitch out at the tourist game, and my fastball isn't as good as it used to be, so I've got to go practice. So I appreciate the opportunity again. Any questions you ever have, please feel free to contact us or talk with us or come see what we do. I really appreciate the opportunity to show off the incredible staff I have and the work we do. So thank you again.
Thank you. All right. Our next agenda item is the Community Child Protection, Child Fatality, and Dr. Jennifer Mullen Dorf will be presenting.
So thank you for allowing me to speak to you tonight. I'll be covering some key points from the 2017 Annual Report to the board that I submitted as Chair of the Buncon County Community Child Protection Team and Child Fatality Prevention Team. So first, I just wanted to lay some groundwork for you guys. The North Carolina Child Fatality Prevention System was established to assess the records of all deaths of children in North Carolina from birth to age 18, as well as selected cases in which children are being served by Child Protective Services. And the purposes of the system are to enable the development of a community-wide approach to child abuse neglect, to understand the causes of child fatality in the state, to identify gaps and/or deficiencies in service delivery by public agencies who are designed to prevent abuse, neglect, and child death, and to make and implement recommendations for laws, rules, or policies to prevent future child abuse, neglect, or death. And some examples of some recommendations that came out of the system include things like car seats for infants and child safety restraints and cars, things that for me, I thought were always there, right? But were developed out of fatality reviews. And so every county in North Carolina has two teams that are part of the system. The first is the Community Child Protection Team. This team reviews selected active cases of children who are being served by Child Protective Services. This team also reviews cases in which children die as a result of suspected or confirmed abuse or neglect, if that child had a report of abuse or neglect, and the child or the family within the prior 12 months before their death, or if the family or the child was receiving Child Protective Services during the 12 months prior to their death. In 2017, our team reviewed four cases of child maltreatment. And I would say that a common thread among all those cases was the need for improved access to mental health and substance use disorder treatment in our community for children as well as their caregivers, especially for those without insurance. But we also noticed that even for people who have private insurance, there's sometimes a big barrier in terms of where their insurance is accepted. So it's a problem regardless, really, of your insurance status. The second team that every county has to have is the Child Fatality Prevention Team. And this team reviews the records of all other child fatalities, basically the deaths of all children who die from a cause other than suspected abuse or neglect. And it's important to note that our fatality reviews are reviewed a calendar year following the child's death, right? So currently, in this 2018 year, we're reviewing 2017 deaths. It takes us that long to get documentation from the state, medical examiners, reports, and things like that. And I'm going to share some data from these fatality reviews in a couple of slides. And in most counties, including our county, these two local teams are actually combined into one team. And the membership of the Community Child Protection Team and the Child Fatality Prevention Team are designated by statute, and they consist of various professionals from public and private agencies that provide services to children and families. And in the Annual Report that I submitted, Appendix 1 has a list of all the mandated members and who's filling those roles. And the Board of Commissioners is the appointing authority for some of those team members, several of the mandated positions. And the board can also appoint as many as five additional members to represent agencies or the community at large. And so tonight, the slide shows the several new team members that we would like, we are requesting the board to appoint to the team. Some of these, so the mandated members are from local law enforcement, and there's been some turnover in some positions, so these are the current members who've been able to attend our meetings. And then additionally, based on the trends that we're seeing related to infant deaths, related to unsafe sleep, and the opioid-affected infants, we would like to have the supervisor of the Care Coordination for Children out of Community Care Western North Carolina join our team, as well as Tammy Cody, who's a clinical social worker at Mission Hospital, who's very much involved in the perinatal substance exposure group. So I would also ask that the board and anybody who's here and listening, there is one slot that we have never been able to fill, and that is the position of a child or a parent who lost a child prior to their 18th birthday. It's a difficult role for someone to play, but if anyone has a connection to somebody who might be willing to join our team, we would greatly appreciate that. And then, I'm going to just show you some of the, this may be hard to see, but last year, we started using an electronic tracking tool to be able to look at, to record the causes of death, as well as some factors that may have contributed to that death of the child. And so last year, our team reviewed 27 deaths of children who resided in Buncon County at the time of their death in 2016. We also had two state-led intensive reviews of the deaths of two children who died that year and whose families have been involved with PSS during the 12 months prior to their death. So this shows all the causes of death. And as you can see, illness and prematurity are the most common causes of death, but there's a wide range, including motor vehicle, pedestrian versus motor vehicle. We had a bad year in 2016 for that. And I'm going to delve a little further into the infant deaths in another slide. By age, you can see that most of the fatalities reviewed, actually half of the fatalities reviewed, were infants, less than one year of age. And we, at Health and Human Services, we've been working over the last couple of years on infant mortality, we've worked on safe sleep, also preconception health. I think all those things are contributing to that number because as we see, again, prematurity is the most common, was the most common cause of the infant mortality cases that we saw in 2016. But as you'll also see, four, so SUID stands for sudden unexplained infant death. So that's where things like SIDS falls, sudden infant death syndrome fall, that's also where things like accidental suffocation and strangulation in bed fall, and then there's also this undetermined, unknown cause that sits under there. For the four infants who died from sudden unexplained infant death, all four of them were in unsafe sleep environments, meaning perhaps they were sleeping on a couch, or they were sleeping in bed with a parent or a sibling, or they had stuffed animals or blankets in their crib with them, things that we know increase the risk of a child dying. And so, again, as I said, the county, we've been working on this at HHS for a while. Based on this, what we've been seeing during our fatality reviews, we've reconvened our work group around safe sleep and are incorporating more community partners and looking at, we recently did a literature review and looked at what is the current literature saying, what's best practice, what are the areas where. The messages are out there, it's just they're not resonating with the people who we need them to resonate with, or there's something, they're not, they're not needing to behavior change, right? So often, we're hearing parents say, well, I know what, where I'm supposed to put my kid, but I made a choice to put him in bed with me, you know, because my other children, I did it with my other kids and they all lived. It's that, it's the hardest part of public health and prevention, really, is making a behavior change established. So to know that we're working on this, we thank you for your support. We definitely want to thank Commissioner Beech Farrar, who is a member of our team. We appreciate her time. And if you have any questions?
Any questions? I don't think there's any at this time, but we really appreciate you being with us and giving us the update. It's great information.
And are we, in terms of appointing those members, is that something I want to know?
It's on the agenda, can we do that this evening?
Because the recommendation in statute comes from the child protection. It'd be fun to do that unless Kathy has a different person.
All right. Further discussion, all of you, please say aye. Aye. Any of those. All right. Thanks for reminding me. All right. Our next report is on the Family Justice Center.
And I know that I don't have any movement units in this conversation. I just want to say, I don't have any minutes, I know, in this conversation, but I do want to, I was wondering if I could have some time to express the concerns that my community has.
Yes, you will later. We'll have hold a comment later.
Later, I said when?
When we're, it's on the agenda, it's at the, it's the last item on the agenda, it's hold a comment.
Can you tell me what time that would be?
I don't know. You need to, you need to, we're going to do this now, okay?
I would give about 20 to 30 minutes. Is it something about 20 minutes?
Probably about 20 minutes.
Yeah. We'll see. We don't know, it just depends on how long it takes to get to the other items.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to address you all this evening. In addition to Child Abuse Prevention Month, April is also Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And so we thought we'd take this opportunity to share with you about the services for victims of sexual assault that are offered at the Family Justice Center, as well as some of the work that your community is doing to address sexual assault and harassment in our community. With the Me Too movement, as well as your investment in the Family Justice Center, we've seen a sea change in the experience of victims of sexual assault who are coming forward and seeking services and support in our community. Since the Family Justice Center opened our doors in July of 2016, we've seen over 700 people walk through those doors for the first time to access integrated intake services, to get connected to multiple different service providers. This year, we've seen a 40% year-over-year increase in the number of people that are walking through those doors to connect with intake services and our service providers. Consistently, about 12% of those folks identify sexual assault as the primary reason that they are coming, could get connected, to seek support and safety. In our most recent quarter, 67% of people who access those integrated intake services connected with more than one service provider while in their first visit at the Family Justice Center. I think that statistic really highlights the efficiency of having all of those co-located. Our VOICE, which is our community sexual assault response organization, serves survivors at the Family Justice Center, and in 2017, they served 564 unduplicated people at the Family Justice Center, offering them counseling, case management, group therapy, art therapy, supportive services to heal from that trauma. Over the last several months, with the Me Too movement, we've seen an increase in the number of sexual assaults that have been reported to law enforcement in our community. In the first three months of 2018, we saw a 44% increase. Over the last several months, with the Me Too Movement, we've seen an increase in the number of sexual assaults that have been reported to law enforcement in our community. In the first three months of 2018, we saw a 44% increase in the number of sexual assault incident reports reported to law enforcement over that time in 2017. So when somebody comes to the Family Justice Center after a sexual assault, they can access a range of services. Through our partnership with Mission Health, they can access forensic medical exams, sexual assault exams, at the Family Justice Center. Mission Health's investment has meant that any services that are provided at their outpatient clinic at the Family Justice Center are provided to survivors for free. A couple of important things for the community to know about sexual assault medical exams is that there's the option of doing what we call an anonymous kit. If someone has been sexually assaulted and chooses not to in that moment seek criminal remedies, seek the criminal justice process, they can come and get a kit done, get that evidence collected, so that the option to seek criminal remedies remains open should they choose to do that in the future. While at the Family Justice Center, they can also talk with law enforcement if they choose to get connected with an advocate from our ones. I'm excited to have Enhelica Win with Our Voice here tonight to talk about the community outreach that their organization is doing to prevent sexual assault and harassment.
Thank you, Julie. Thank you so much for having me here. It is a pleasure and honor to be here before you to talk a little bit about Our Voice and our services that relates to sexual violence and how we can prevent it. Julie said a little bit about the stats in regards to how many survivors of sexual violence that the Family Justice Center has served, or Our Voice has served through the Family Justice Center. But I just want to go really quickly on a couple of stats. We know that one in three women will be impacted by sexual violence sometime during their lifetime. We know that one in six men will be impacted by sexual violence sometime in their lifetime. What we also know is that communities that are marginalized and vulnerable, such as the Black and African American community, the OTTPQI community, the undocumented community, the immigrant community, that they are more vulnerable to sexual violence and yet less likely to access services, including our Family Justice Center. And so, it is my hope to move forward in the conversations that we have around sexual violence and what is currently happening in our community around immigration enforcement, that we keep light of the fact of how do we create a community that allows for all individuals that are impacted by sexual violence to be able to come and report, be able to come and access services around that. But until we get to that level, one of the conversations that I am so pleased to be here is to have a conversation in regards to how do we keep sexual violence from happening to begin with? Our Voice's services are fantastic, and I really appreciate your support, because we have only been able to serve more survivors as a result of your support. But nonetheless, our services are only the Band-Aid. What we want is to keep individuals from getting cut to begin with. We want sexual violence not to happen to begin with. And what that means is that Our Voice has focused in the last 25 years on prevention education. We want to shift the social norms and attitudes that contribute to sexual violence. So very much like Joseph Dolly from Mount Shale, that would be center, we want to run ourselves out of a job. And so, the way that we do this is through the creation and implementation of several different prevention education curricula, some that we work with the schools. But I am here actually to talk to you about two innovative programs that this community has supported, two programs that are known, well, one is known nationally and one we're about to launch nationally as well. Our first program is the Bar Outreach Program. So the Bar Outreach Program is a program that we created in 2008 as a response to increased reports in drug facilitated sexual assaults, commonly known as DFSA. So there's an idea that DFSA is that person who's slipping a roofie or GHB near a drink, and it can look like that. But in actuality, the number one drug that is related to drug facilitated sexual assault is alcohol. And as you know, our, our community actual is known as Beer City USA. And we pride ourselves with the breweries that we have welcomed into our community and have thrived in our community. Having said that, we've also seen an increase in DFSA reports. So how the Bar Outreach Program works is that we connect with local bars or any other establishment that sells alcohol to train their staff on bystander intervention strategies that allow for the bar staff to be able to assess situations and intervene in situations where drug facilitated sexual assault may occur. It also trains them to be able to keep an eye of, okay, if you see a drink that they left behind or unattended, pick it up, throw it away, right? How it is that they can employ very simple, but yet very meaningful strategies on minimizing drug facilitated sexual assault. It also includes reaching out to the community, educating them that this is a real thing and it's happening in our community. One of the things that we are particularly proud of is that the Bar Outreach Project, we have been able to work with the Department of Health and Human Services, the Health Inspectors. When we talk about prevention education, yes, Our Voice does lead in the state and the nation with regards to prevention programming, but it isn't just our sole responsibility. So we're able to partner with local partners in how they can engage to support prevention education. And one of them is through our collaboration with the Health and Human Services, Health Inspectors. And so, we have worked to train the Health Inspectors with regards to drug facilitated sexual assault and how they can engage in that conversation. So when they're conducting the health inspections in the restaurants, anywhere the food is served, they can speak with the owners and staff and say, around drug facilitated sexual assault and how they can engage in prevention programming as well. And so, we're really excited, because this is a unique collaboration in the nation. And Monmouth County has been uplifted as leading the work around this, and there are a lot of other communities across the state that are looking to see how they can partner with their local Health and Human Services around this. The other project that we have is the 86th Curriculum, which we will be launching relatively soon, which deals with sexual harassment in the restaurant business. Some of y'all may know, but when we talk about sexual harassment, there was a national survey that was conducted, and the restaurant business is where the individuals have indicated that the highest rates of sexual harassment has occurred. So we created an 86th Curriculum that seeks to work with management on creating stronger anti-sexual harassment policies, but also trains them on how to respond to disclosures. In addition, we work with the restaurant staff with regards to how they can engage in bystander intervention strategies as well. So we invite you to be a part of these conversations and be on the lookout in the next couple of weeks as we launch this locally and nationally. Thank you so much for your time.
In addition to the great work that is happening at Our Voice, the business community is getting involved in this conversation and working together to build a community that's free from sexual assault and harassment. The Chamber of Commerce is hosting a Woman Up event on May 7th. And if folks are interested in learning more about how their business can partner to create an environment that's free of sexual harassment, attending this seminar is a great opportunity. There will be legal advice, HR experts, as well as victim advocates. It's a really great example of that public-private partnership to prevent sexual harassment. In addition, and as part of the great prevention work that Our Voice is doing, I just want to take a moment to highlight our community's prevention plan. This is a plan that has been led by helping Our Voice and Non-Child Advocacy Center. And the collaboration really grew out of the collaboration that has occurred within the Family Justice Center. They identify that there are shared risk and protective factors for domestic violence, sexual assault, and child abuse. And that is, if we, as a community, work together to address the risk factors and to build the preventive factors, then we truly can build a community free of violence. A broad range of partners has come together to develop this plan that addresses prevention within our faith communities, within our schools, within our workplaces. We believe that it's the first in the state plan to address all three forms of violence in a coordinated way. We've applied for funding support for the Women for Women of the Community Foundation of Western North Carolina, and are hoping that we are funded to be able to implement this plan in our community. In addition, for Sexual Assault Awareness Month, our Still Standing Project has highlighted the stories of survivors of sexual assault. This project, which I hope you've seen out in the community, was led by the creative talents of Cataldo Perron with the Monmouth County PR, as well as the work of community partners and many survivors who have stood up to share their stories of courage and hope. We've had an incredible response from businesses and organizations in our community, and really believe that businesses hosting these life-size silhouettes are standing up to, against domestic and sexual violence. I encourage you to take some time to read the stories and explore at monmouthcounty.org/stillstanding. Now, welcome, any questions?
I want to thank you and for everyone listening, that everyone is welcome to the Family Justice Center, and no one should ever feel that they don't have a place to go. And I think that's extraordinary, and I think the more we can circulate that message so that everyone knows they can go there is great. The restaurant work for too long, too, too long, people have, you know, whether it's a question of getting more shifts to work, more tips, they have suffered against this harassment, and thank you for taking such a bold step.
Thank you.
Just chime in again to say thank you to you and the entire team at FJC and all the county departments and the sheriff's office and local partners who are represented there. It's really remarkable, remarkable work and impacts so many lives. Thank you.
Thanks for your support.
Thank you, Julie. All right. The next item on our agenda is the ambulance franchise updating. And Michael Frue, I think will start this present here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I was just asking to remind the board and the public that we have Mr. Maria Perez as an interpreter here this evening. This matter concerns the medic application for franchise for emergency response services in the county. Mr. Tally is here, some other representatives of medic came before the Board to consider that request in November, and through discussions with this Board and the county manager, this Board approved the hiring and retention of independent third parties to review the need for additional ambulance services and essentially to review the current emergency response system in Monmouth County and see how this might best fit. So the county did retention services of management solutions for emergency services. Mr. Keith Boss is here today, and he will explain what he found out in his report and what his recommendations are.
First, I'd like to thank you for allowing my company to do this study. We do a lot of research, like, just to weave, provide knowledge and education. So do you feel a few ways I really agree with your view and know enough of the questions or do you have a question? Just do more.
Why don't you, can you give us a, give your presentation and we'll pause the questions?
Okay. Well, we was contacted by county staff to look at your EMS.
Can't hear back here at all. You're tall, I'm sorry, you have to bend over.
We were contacted by county staff to look at your EMS system, to see if it was adequate, if it was lacking, and to look at an outside agency, because they had filed for permission to do franchise on the county. In those conversations, we, to save money, believe it or not, we felt the first step was to see if you're adequate in your service. And we all agreed that that's the path we'd go down. So in that process, we gathered multiple parts of data. We gathered raw data on your response times. We gathered billing information. We gathered financial reports from the fire departments. And the data analyst for us provided the numbers. If you look at the report and you go through it, the three things that we wanted to do with that data was to see if you're meeting a standard. The standard we used was NFPA 1710. It's really targeted for fire protection, fire departments that have ambulance systems or services to use as a standard, called EMS, usually doesn't have standards like NFPA. So we used that standard to look at response times. And after we took the data and then pulled the information from it that we needed, you actually come close to meeting NFPA 1710, which is really good. A lot of fire departments across the country don't even meet it. We also looked at your data when it was related to your response time when it comes to how fast your people are getting out of the building. We recognized that the standard shows that your people need to be out of the building less than a minute. We did see in our study that the fire service side of it, the fire department side of it, they're actually coming close to meeting that standard of less than a minute. The EMS side probably can improve a little bit. Most of those were getting out of the stations in less than two minutes. And so, we noticed some possible improvement there. We looked at two counties of like kind, tried to find like kind. Union County is a little less, smaller than y'all. In that part of it, they provided 14 ambulances during peak hours, which is usually during the day, and 11 at night. They reduced our ambulances at night. When we look at a county larger than yours, which is Durham County, they provide 19 ambulances during the day. They also reduced our staffing of ambulances to 10 even in the non-peak hours. What we recognize with the others is you provide 19 ambulances during peak times and actually 17 at night, which is way more than a county of 50,000 or more population with a lot more density. So your response times, you're almost meeting NFPA 1710. On staffing of ambulances, you actually provide more than counties of average. You're, let's see, so we use that data. And then we looked at, once we recognized that proficiency wise, you're meeting or coming close to meeting NFPA 1710, with a little more improvement of maybe management when it comes to getting out of the stations faster, you possibly could meet NFPA 1710. So with that and your like kind of having more resources than like kind, we felt like you were proficient in the services that you're providing. Now, one of the questions that was asked us is if we allow another entity, outside or internal, to basically start providing services, how would that affect us? Well, it's going to affect your financial. It's like any service that you provide, there's a cost related to it. So we pulled data from billing agencies, the fire departments, the restaurants board, and the county's billing agency to see actually how much federal funding, how much contract funding, and how much billing that the county actually brought in. And if you look in the report, it's actually right at $17 million. Well, that's what the charges were, the net charge of $17 million. But you, when you talk Medicaid, Medicare, and other billing, you have to look at what you actually bring in. And your payments were 11 million, 11.3 million. So once we recognize your numbers, then we look at it and say, okay, out of that, there was 39,614 trips. Trips equal to billable transport is what we're looking at. So what you have now is billing for 39,614 trips. If you allow an outside organization or even another organization to start responding to medical calls, you're going to reduce that number of billable trips that the county's actually receiving financial federal funding. So even if the outside, one of the things we said was, one of the outside agencies wants to provide service for free. When we look at services, it's hard to say free, because free usually doesn't exist. But let's say that you have an outside organization or an ins- But let's say that you have an outside organization or an inside organization that wants to start providing service totally for free. And definition of free is free to the county where you don't subsidize it and they don't bill for Medicaid and Medicare and they don't bill the patient. Does that make sense? So if they provide it 100% free, it's still going to remove federal dollars from your system. Does that make sense? So you're going to see if anybody is brought into the system right now, which we feel is very adequate, it's going to hurt you financially with removing federal funding from the system. So the biggest thing we found is you're adequate. You're almost meeting NFPA 1710, which is a huge standard for fire service and EMS transport. And then next thing is you have good times that you've probably improved on. Certain areas, and we listed it down to area codes, the reason we look at area codes versus district, in most cases, if you don't have an ABL, which is a system, we, a system we can recognize where that ambulance is sitting, you have that system. So if Fairview or Skyland's dispatch, they can be dispatched out of their district. It's actually dispatching the closest ambulance versus a fire district. With that system in place, we've decided to actually give you more areas that we can break that data down. So we broke it down into zip codes. We didn't go any closer than zip codes because if you actually, if I produce a report that shows any more than a zip code, then it can actually be reverse engineered and possibly have some hip issues contained due, somebody can figure out where that call was actually dispatched to. So we give you a zip code for that situation. If you look at the zip codes that are not meeting the NFPA 1710, you'll recognize that those districts have a very small population. That tells us in the report, the data side of it, is that area is too small to concentrate an EMS ambulance to dedicate. One of them is less than 200 calls a year. That means that you're generating less than one call a day. It would be hard financially to be able to place an ambulance with full staff in an area that's generating less than one call a day. So we've looked and give you all that data to where you can focus your attention management-wise, improve your system even more, which I think is very adequate right now. You have a healthy fleet that's been replaced all last year. Anything that I've actually found out through one of the commissioners that called is there's actually more ambulances than we report. We used, data wise, we gather and gather, we work extremely hard not to contact fire chiefs, EMS providers, stuff like that. Reason being is every conversation we have, there's always people who wasn't in the conversation that wondered what the conversation was about. So we work off the email and we also look at, we looked at their budgets and we obtained releases to contact their billing agencies directly for raw data where our people can use that data ourselves. So in doing so, we recognized your fleet's been totally replaced on the county unit side. And the way I understand, there's been three more ambulances provided to fire departments and rescue squads. So you actually have more resources than what we actually established in this report because the time we gathered our information, they've already been three more purchased or actually paid and placed with the county in the internal organization. So after you look at the whole report, it just comes down to it, is you're proficient right now. You have a lot more resources than the norm or like kind. So if you want to allow somebody outside or internal to provide a service, it's just, you will see a financial impact. And is the county wanting to supplement the tax funds to keep the service better or is the county, does the county want to take back the internal organizations and dial them back as you allow an outside organization to start providing service? That's the two questions we posed to you that you have to answer.
So have you been able to establish what the financial loss would be? That's one question. And then two, if you look at typical response times, because I think, I speak for others in that, we want first ambulance, that can get there, we get there.
Yes, ma'am. The old 1710 is built off of recognized response times. It's one of the most used factors of seeing how healthcare is actually delivered. So yes, that's our, the biggest part of our study is to make sure that your response times are where they are, are where they need to be. Now, there's areas, when you look at the report, that identify, that doesn't meet that eight-minute response time.
What areas are those?
It would be the 28715 doesn't meet it, the 28753 doesn't meet it, and the 28701 doesn't meet it. So that would be the area codes. But if you look at the next page, on page eight, if you look at those area codes, they got a population per mile of 240 with a total trips of 298. 298's a trip. If you look at the funding side, there's about $300 this collected. So you look at a trip charge of $800, really you're collecting about $400, $300, $400. So if you figure that 298 times $400, if you put an ambulance in that location to get all 298, that's what you're going to generate with federal funding, which is not enough to, in my mind, to justify the need.
Let me ask you a question. At this point, you know, I'm concerned too about service as well as finances, but I think the most important by constituents is they need an ambulance. I wanted that. But you compared us to Union and Durham County. I'm familiar with both counties, but one of the things that we're looking at in Buncombe County is we are a retirement community and we've got a lot of people with gray hair like me who, when we want need the service, we wanted that. But, and when we look ahead, it's what's projected to the future, we even going to get more enlightening. So, you know, I don't want to see us worried about a few dollars and hurting the service that we're giving our constituents, because heck, I might be one of them. But, you know, did you look at that?
Oh, absolutely. And if you read the report, it basically says that if, the choice is yours, we showed you the response times are meeting the national standard. It's not my opinion, it's the standard. We look at your shoot times on how fast your people's getting out of the door, that's the national standard. We look at, like Durham, I mean, if you look at your density, I mean, there's, here's a 660 square miles of area, there's this 3, 290 something. So there is some difference in density. As a retired fire chief, I'll tell you that I would love to, and this study says it, I would have loved to put a fire truck on every corner because I could guarantee then a response. I could guarantee that my people would be on the scene in less than three, four minutes. And if I can stop, be within that five to four to five minute range, I can really turn around death coming to cardiac arrest. But I do have to look at financially how that will affect me. Now, in our report, we showed you all the elements of that for you to be able to sit and say, you know, okay, do we want to achieve a better than national standard? Do we want to put ambulances in a more dense area? And do we care about costs? My job was to provide you with the numbers where you can make that decision because in my opinion, I would put a fire truck on every corner, but do you want free me in all stations, set on every corner? The funny fact did have to enter, did have to enter in our mind.
So I've got a, just a couple of questions. And one in relation to, you know, Commissioner Whiteside's comments, that you do say that, you know, should we decide to do this as far as level of care, that we have key performance standards, we have service agreements, that we approach it in a proper way, then that does become, that does become a responsible decision. I understand that what you provide is great information and it's, and the more I think we look at it, the more we can glean from it. You know, one of the questions, I got, I got three questions. One is, the, I would assume from a financial standpoint that the collection rate would also be a big player in that, in that equation, you know, because, you know, we're at a 70% rate and two other surrounding counties are at 80%. So I would assume that's an obvious yes, right? So there's room to improve that, which would, which would lessen, which would improve the revenue within that system.
That's correct. We, but the billing agencies that you actually use, Andrew and Amanda, Soul Company, both of them, we've seen across the state provide a real, a healthy collection rate. 70% is pretty healthy. Now, there are ways that you can improve it and there's, but there again, it's how far does the county want to go down that path. There's counties that, and I didn't, one thing we didn't ask friends about in the county or Henderson County Rescue was does their ordinance allow full harbor collection? Because that is a way that you can improve is if you start leaning and stuff like that, but most counties and governments don't go that far.
But it would be reasonable to, you know, for us to review that given we receive the information. Another thing is, did you, did you include in your report or did you look at historic call volume? Of words, where we've been, where were we at 10 years ago compared to now and, you know, how our call volume has, you know, went up based on, you know, population issue?
Yes, sir. We actually looked, if you look on page 12, we went back nine, five years. We didn't go back, what we've seen doing these things across the state on the line is anything between about '08 and '12 with the hardship that this country's seen, population migrated back and forth. So we've seen that that data between those years isn't going to be good data. So we, we went back five years versus ten years.
I think, I think we had that information, I just can't, I just can't pull it up in my computer. So I think we, I think we had that in a, in a report before and I believe it, I believe it had went up, I believe it had went up quite a bit. And I had another thing, this also is in line with Commissioner Whiteside's question regarding comparing our counties to other counties. A couple of these zip codes are in my, my district, for example, 28715 is Canada, 2806 is West Asheville, Pink Creek, some of those areas. 25% of the call volume is in some of those areas, but the, it would seem to me that the terrain in Buncombe County would also make a difference in, in response time in that, in that eight-minute. You know, we're not going, like in Durham County, we're not going, we're not going three streets over or we're not going, you know, it's just, it's, it's different. And so that's where a lot of this conversation come from, not that we're grateful that you've shown us that our existing system is exemplary in a lot of ways. You know, our concern was just making sure that we were dealing with the terrain properly and that we were making sure that, you know, somebody dialed 911 for the grandmother, that we want to get there and get there with as many, you know, ambulances as you could within reason, so.
And after we provided the Union County status with 640 years or 660, it's about 50,000 population less, well, actually about 40. We wanted to provide the population data. If we went down, further down that path, we probably could have provided you with demographic data showing the aging population maybe.
So, so to me, what you're saying is that the greatest harm if we did this would be some financial loss. You're not saying it's going to affect patient care, anything like that, is that right?
Absolutely not. I mean, it's just like I said, maybe on the fire service, if I put a fire truck on every corner, it's only going to improve the service. It's just the financially always going to take the financial, you do that. And that's, that's where you are, is you meet the standard, you're adequate now of like kind, even larger populations, is, it's, it's just, are you, are you willing to supplement a few more, it could be a million though, to increase that system.
Do we know how much it would be or we don't know?
Well, right now with the, with the population, you know, even our data, if you look at the numbers that we provided you on the financial side, we listed the trips. So we listed the entity, the trips, the net charges, and then the payments. And that means money in the bank, that's all we're concerned about. If you take and you allow an ambulance, and it'd be even hard for us, that's page 15 out of 22. If you take an ambulance and you just let them come into the county and start running openly, just freely, it would be hard to, hard to identify what, what financially that would do to you if you limit them to a district and we know how many trips within that zip code, then we probably can tell you financially how that would affect you. But you can do the same thing with the breath on 15, 22, is you can look at those trips and marvel and say you allow an outside agency to completely take it over. Estimated they're going to do about 300 or three trips, plus remind.
Can I, can I, just on this point though, I mean, you know, if we raised the tax rates in the districts enough to offset any losses, then, you know, theoretically, the service levels that are out there today could be made whole, but unless we're really clear that we're willing to raise the tax rates in the fire districts to make them whole for any diversion of revenue that results from this, then, then it would, it would hurt the existing services that are out there because those, we know these fire districts are already struggling, you know, to, you know, to do, to do the operations that they have, they stretch every dollar. So if, if they're not made whole, then it absolutely would harm the existing services, right? Because they would be in a position where they would either have to, if we don't raise the tax district rates, they would have to cut personnel or cut staffing. Those would be, that would be the reality for the fire districts unless we raise, unless we kind of agree upfront, whatever revenues diverted, we raise the tax rates by that.
Well, we already noticed that in the study that the Skyland Fire Department, they used to staff two ambulances and budget wise, they backed it down to one because the county added another EMS ambulance into the system that affected them. So when you, when you put that EMS ambulance into the system, you pulled federal funding from Skyland. So luckily, the fire chief or whoever done the budget and the decision said, we need to remove our staffing because we can't afford to move forward without supplementing the tax funding. So that, it's already happening. And that's, that's where our report states is, even if you want to increase your services, you have a lot of resources that are sitting in buildings that's not being staffed. Instead of bringing an outside agency in or adding an internal agency, it may be cheaper, I would strongly suggest it's probably cheaper to actually staff what you have now. Would be your best financial decision.
I mean, we, we were looking, okay, yeah, yeah.
One thing came up, this started back in December, I think at the meeting. Have you got any numbers on how many 911 causes went to med that they was not anyone available to come out?
When we looked at the numbers provided us out of the CAD system, it come out as EMS and then fire. So if, with-
But you have one saying that how many went to, you know, the polygamy medics. I had a 911 tell me 347 calls has been translated to them because they had no ambulances available to go there. You figure that up over time and the dollar wise, it's $450 is what- You figure that up over time, and the dollar wise, if $450 is what they're going to get out of 800, there's already $156,000 there.
Yes, sir. And if you, if we would have dug deeper into the system, we probably could have found why that was, and if it may be that second ambulance, that the first ambulance at Skyland Fire Department may have been on the call already. So if they would have had that second ambulance staff, we may not have had to do that.
Well, I don't think this was just the Skyland area, I think this is across the county. You know, I guess what I want to say is, being an X race car driver, you're in accidents all the time. I sure didn't want someone from outside the county coming to racetrack me laying there, you know, for a couple hours when you could have somebody right there available.
Absolutely. And that's where our study showed that if you want to increase your services, you have resources available to do something. That's our, our attitude. Do we have a problem with you bringing an outside agency out of the county? That's not, but our opinion.
When we had a meeting, it was a seven vote to put them on because we want the closest ambulances to pick us up. I'm like my friend, Mr. Whiteside down there, getting a little aged in me. But we don't. There's been dispatch calls that, there's been ambulances sent from Reynolds District. The Tully's ambulance sits right over here in our office, that's their base, they give them downtown Asheville, okay? That's the area where there's no money. But they take it anyway because that's what they want to do. What you didn't do, if you'd have backed up one year, you'd have figured it out. Fire departments didn't even have ambulances. So once, on September the 9th, be five years this coming September, they took them off the road. They've been in business since 89, they were paramedic group. They handed it to the different fire departments. First thing they do is go out and buy new ambulances. Because the fire people's taxed dollars buying ambulances. That's what should be for fire tax. Going up against taxpayers for that, I can't see it because we have one that you talked about, and I'm the person that you talked to. We went and looked at Buncombe Rescue, county manager and myself. We get to the door, there ain't really anything there, but all of a sudden the door opens up. We figure out that now they've got four ambulances because Mr. Vehan gave them one. They have one that's blew it up, but they're only from nine to nine. So, you know, the Tully's walked through the door, you haven't met them, they're sitting right there. You didn't go research what they have, you might have looked at it on paper, but you didn't go look at their business. How many ambulances, even our Buncombe County, Ms. Stone and myself went to their place to look to see what they had. Ms. Tully's daughter showed us. They don't only do that, they teach classes, they got dummies just like hospitals, they show how to bring people back. They lay them on their stretchers, they teach these classes. You're talking about cutting the legs out from under the fire departments, they cut them out from under theirs. And then they were happy because when they did it. One day, you're sitting close, right over here at the Shell Station, right across the bridge, medic ambulance, that's where it always sits with somebody in it. They didn't have a leave time to get an ambulance to go, they sent an ambulance. Here's their ambulance, and guess what's sitting next to it? Skyland Fire Department. That's when it's taken on. They're on a different radio service, it's one that they have to carry more radios for. The main thing is, I want the closest ambulance to me. If it was somebody else that had been around as long as they have, they've been paramedics since 89. They've been paramedics over Buncombe Rescue one year, one year. So there is professionals in the ring. And me personally, you know, I understand that you've tried to do a great job for us and I see it. Marshall, that's not us. Lee Sester has a contract with Marshall, has nothing to do with us. But I do remember a long time ago, I've known the Tully's a long time, Robert does too, because in racing, current race, the mother and them took care of the racetrack down here. Somebody got hurt, they took them in. But they did it because that's what they want to do. They're doing it now because that's the way, what they want to do. When you're picking up people down in town, Asheville, that's what they give you, on a different radio, or injured, whatever you call it, that means you're getting no money. How are we cutting somebody else's throat? If there's an ambulance out in Reynolds, and there's an ambulance right here, and they have to dispatch Reynolds to Hominy, this ambulance is closer. You want the quickest one to get there. It's about seven minutes, the distance. There's a whole lot of issues here. But the main issue for me, he says he'll do it, you know, for the cost of whatever he picks up, but he wants to be to where they can see him. And they, if, I talked to him out of Fairview. He said, well, we were at Mission Hospital one day and they sent us to West Asheville. Well, that's fine, because they run the thing, they saw what is at Mission, and they sent them to West Asheville. That's good. But what they used to do, they used to do, is they'd be here, they could hear what's going on. When Skyland or Fairview did not have an ambulance at all. But there is an ambulance in Reynolds that belongs to by the county. So if it had to go somewhere and they heard it had to leave, they would put another, take this ambulance downtown and move it closer to 74th so they could work both. That's what we're looking for, is somebody not jumping in. You're looking at numbers, I see you're looking at numbers. But Skyland, they thought the ambulance deal was going to be great, so does Fairview. It's like I said, we give them tax money four, five years ago, when I first become commissioner. First thing you did, spent $161,000 on ambulances. Because we're on an ambulance service because Tully's been shut down. Well, you're saying we're going to cut the legs out from under them? They got their legs cut out from under them. So what's fair will be fair. These radios that we have, this area that they can spot where his ambulances are, if it's the closest ambulance, I want it. If it's Fairview, I want it. If it's Raisville, I want it. But that's, you know, that's what we need. There's questions that could be asked of these people, all of them sitting here, it's a family. You know, what has this done? They have a contract with VA, which are still down here doing what they do and doing other things. They work the fire grounds, they work the other stuff. They have almost as many ambulances as we have in the county. And they bought them, and they pay tax on them, and they're not a nonprofit. We get money off their buildings. So if you think I'm going to cut them down, you're wrong.
So I just have two questions, sorry. So in your professional opinion, two questions, is this going to cause irreparable financial harm to the fire district? That's number one. Two, if we don't do this, in your estimation, if someone's life could be in jeopardy if we don't have this? And I know there are, the second one is hypothetical, but you're an expert in this.
First one is financial. I think you will see a financial hardship on fire departments if you're going to force them to scale back services. And that's what you have to, if you cut the legs out of him, he's probably going to still scale back services to survive. If you, they're the same to the fire service, you'll have to supplement to keep the service where it is now. If they want to bring five ambulances, four ambulances into the system to pick up calls, you'll see millions that you're going to have to supplement to allow that to happen without, without disturbing how the fire department is running now. Now, so that's the first question you asked. The second question, it's so hypothetical that it's hard for an old fire chief to answer that. I would love to have a fire department with an ambulance sitting on every corner. There's some good stuff out there in the emergency service field that are starting to really work towards the clinical death signs, CPR and stuff like that, that I wish we had unlimited amount of them, then I could stop a lot of. So your question is, is somebody going to be put in jeopardy if you don't start that? You don't want to answer?
Are any of our response times alarming as they exist now?
If you look at some of the rural areas, like the 28701, in 2017, 15, 16 minutes, there's a few 17 minutes. Those to me should be looked at, if it means shifting ambulances into those areas. But I always have to look back to and say, you know, are you receiving 300 calls or 200 calls in that area? And financially, well, that, you know, you have to look at what do you want and look at how financially you get there. That's what our report does for you, is it provides you a lot of data where you can make that decision very soundly.
So if we added this, do you see those response times being cut down?
It depends on if you require them to stay in an area. If you say, you know, we have four locations that really need to be focused on right now, and I think we actually listed out those area codes for you, to get you under the NPA standard. If you say, we're willing to let you come in, but you're going to focus on these areas, then yeah, I think, there is no doubt that you'll see a better response time. But if you've got, again, if you've got an area that is running 200 calls a year or trips that's available for even a nonprofit, is it financially stable enough that you can enter that market to provide a call? So it's, it's always that. Is it, yes, if you put more resources in that zip code, you will see a decrease, I firm to believe that. But it's going to be a financial decision you have to make. And the decision you'd have to make is, do you have resources available right now that you can staff? Because you have a lot of ambulances, like the rescue squad, I'm talking to Mr. Frye, is that right? Mr. Frye, with the rescue squad having four ambulances and only staffing one from nine to nine, that means there's three available ambulances that you own that can be staffed. But I did understand you say something to me, Mr. Frye, you said, I would, it doesn't matter if it's a for-profit or nonprofit, or a cut the legs out of a nonprofit versus a for-profit. The other thing that I want you to understand on that statement is this, if Skyland Fire Department goes out of business, chances are their resources will be distributed inside your county to other agencies. That's how nonprofits work, is nobody owns the assets. The assets are owned by the corporate members of that district. And if they vote to go to dissolve, their assets usually, if you have, in a good case, are distributed inside your county. If you have a for-profit business and it goes out of business, those assets are liquidated to make what you can make, to go in either your pocket or the payout bill. So investing in a nonprofit that's contractually based right now with you, at least you know those assets can stay here. That was the only part that I wanted to make sure that you wanted to do.
Okay. But this for-profit's been here since 1989. This for-profit used to back Buncombe County up, okay? That's, they still do, because they hear every day, two ambulances down. Well, that means somebody didn't show up for work.
And my mind's spinning as fast as it can go, because one thing you probably could do is you could put a contractual agreement in place with them if they do come in, that their resources, that's purchased.
All we're saying, all we're saying is, bring them in. I'm not saying five ambulances, I'm not even saying two. I'm just saying, if they can get back on and they got ambulances here, and all of a sudden there's something in Hominy, they can go. And if Fairview's sitting there and they're closer, let them go. You know, that way, if they go over close enough to Fairview, then they can cover Fairview, Fairview being gone in that area. It's not putting them in an area, it's putting them to where they're, if they got one ambulance, putting one ambulance out there. The main thing is, nobody can see them. That's what you said, they can see them. They can't even get, there's a 700 channel. They got to 800, and they got to 700. The city's got them on the 700, but the county won't let them, that's our radio. Now, they have to carry a spare radio, we pay for spare tires, tires, to be able to dispatch them, so these people have to carry extra radios instead of carrying one. That is the main thing here. We need to get them the radios, we need to get them to work. They don't want a district. If they sit down here and do exactly what they've been doing, right over here on Charlotte Street, that's fine. But if they can hear what's going on, then if they're the closest ambulance, they can be sent. If they're not, if somebody is, period. If they don't get a call, period. It's just the option that they have. I'm not, you'd have to ask them if they're going to put any extra ambulances up. I don't, no, not right now, she's just shaking her head. So, you know, she runs a show. But the fact is, is something was taken away. As I said, to cut the legs off. Shut them off one night at 8 o'clock at night. I got the email in office. I want the closest ambulance to pick me up. And I promise you, if it's them, Fairview, I don't care, Raisville, Asheville, Buncombe County, whoever's closest. Mr. Presley, I think anybody on this board would say the same thing. And that's just where I'm at. I don't want to hurt any of the ambulance people. But the fact is, they'll make it with the one. But we don't need to put them in ambulance business, okay? Fairview sold their ambulances. Then when we give them money and this deal come about, they bought a new one, now they bought a second one, then we give them one the other day. So they want to go into ambulance business. Well, that's, you know, we got ambulance services. And that's, you know, I don't care if we're giving them one or what. We give one to Barnesfield because all he wanted was a spare. He didn't put, he's not putting it in service, he just wanted a spare because his, had a problem with his. In that way, but that's how I got these free ambulances going. I did that through, I said, he wanted to buy one, but he didn't want to buy it off the internet. So I got them hooked up, next thing I know, we have one. So he blamed that on me, but, you know, it's like I said, he's got a spare ambulance out in Barnesfield now and they need it. It's a long ways out there.
One question. I think, going back to what Commissioner Frost said about the response time, you know, I think we need to make aware of 347 calls since December. How much would that have added to the response time had they not switched over and called, you know, the Tully's and said, hey, what have you got available? Have you got any dad on that?
We just looked at the response time. If they responded as an EMS agency to a call, we have that data that's included in it.
Within the last 90 days.
Because the raw data we pulled is every EMS dispatched in your county in 2017. And the data analyst actually took all the standards away to make sure that it was an emergency service, emergency response versus convalesce or non-emergency response. So the data's in there.
Hey, I'd like to, I'd like to make a few comments and maybe ask one question. So first I just want to say, I really appreciate the preparation of the report, and I really appreciate the commission supporting the preparation for the report as part of the consideration of this idea. I think this is a very important, very important discussion and decision. Provisions of emergency response services are undoubtedly one of the most critical public public services that, that we are responsible for in partnership with the various partners that we work with. So, you know, and as I've, you know, thought about this issue for a number of years, after I got elected to the county commission, heard both sides of it, you know, grew both sides of the issue. And it's a pretty complicated issue in a lot, in a lot of ways. And it's not something that I had a lot of expertise on. You know, there's some issues that you come on here and you kind of have been involved in for a long time. This one was not, not one of those kind of issues for me at that time. And so, and I really wrestled with this because I wasn't sure what the right thing to do was. And, you know, I was concerned that maybe in the past, some of these ideas weren't given fair consideration. There's a lot of turk out there, you know, in these kind of arenas. And I didn't want an idea like this to not be considered because of, you know, because of those kind of issues. And the same way, I don't want us to support it for, you know, for those same reasons either. So I really, I was glad we were going to do this report to get, to get kind of an objective look at, does this strengthen our system of emergency response services in Buckland County? Does it make it better? Or does it kind of have very little effect? Or, you know, does it, does it have the potential to actually weaken the system that we have in place? So I learned a lot from this report. And while I was very much on the fence on this issue prior to this, you know, frankly, I'm very persuaded that this is something we should be very cautious about considering because there just seems to be a lot of data here that, you know, that points towards the conclusion that, you know, and it all depends on, you know, if something were created, how, how large scale is it? How, how robust is it? But at the end of the day, there, there are just going to be, the number of emergency service calls that come into Buckland County in our partnerships every year, that's kind of a fixed number, right? Like what we do up here doesn't change that. So we have a system out there today that was developed to meet in the most efficient way that people, people devise to meet it, both in county and our nonprofit partners, to meet that need with the resources that they have. So that's the system we have today. And the report really affirms that it's working pretty well. There's great relationships between the nonprofit groups in the county, which you don't see everywhere. The relationships are good. The service levels are good. You know, could things be better? Of course, they can always be better. And our job is to always figure out how to, how to, how to make it better. And I think that our commission has expressed support for potentially investing more, you know, to increase the pay of these hardworking people in this sector who, you know, don't make much money for doing very hard work and, and for other needs. So I don't think we're saying that we would never invest more to improve the system. I think there's an openness to doing that. But, you know, the idea of creating, you know, an expanded new entity within the system we have today, it does, it does appear that the, you know, the data strongly indicates it would financially divert significant resources from the existing efforts and organizations that are doing this work today. And I just, I would just like to read a couple of the sections from the report that I thought were particularly important. The, the report found that the, the current EMS system in Buckland County is a well-planned and well-found-out system. The county EMS has a fleet of 14 ambulances. 10 of those staffed and staged throughout the county. And then Barnesville, Lester, Rames Creek and Riceville each provide one ALS ambulance. The working, the working relationship is positive. But let me just kind of skip to the conclusions. So to better understand an economic impact, MFS, your organization, looked at Fairview Fire Department. Fairview had 830 trips they billed for 2017. This is on page 16, the top, top of that page. So Fairview Fire Department had 830 trips they billed for 2017. Out of those trips, they billed for $392,000, but only received 67% of the billed funds. This means that Fairview Fire Department, who provides two ambulances, only received $262,000 to support the cost of providing two ambulances. The cost of Fairview for those two ambulances would include the normal salary range of someone trained to the level of a paramedic, the medical supplies used and the equipment used. If an external company arrived today and started running calls in the Fairview District, running half of the 830 trips would take approximately $131,000 from Fairview's income. If this were to happen, Fairview would most likely need to cut its second ambulance and terminate staff. This change wouldn't provide any more of a service than it does now. It would simply reduce the resources used by the Fairview Fire Department and allow the external company to provide a service. The second option would be for the county to increase, to allow Fairview to increase its tax rate by one cent to cover the loss of income. So yeah, again, if we raise all the rates, then, then, then they would have to cut their services. But if we, if we aren't committed to raising the taxes, undeniably, we would, these, these existing organizations, the funds that are diverted would come directly out of their budget. So I, so I, I just think this is something we need to be very cautious about. I think it's an important decision. And I just, I wanted to raise my concerns about, about consideration of this, you know, based on, based on this report.
So you go ahead. Thanks. Just briefly, similarly, I've approached this sort of with a very open mind and wanting to see data. And I've approached the work session we did with local fire chiefs in a similar way. I see our responsibility at the commission level is helping to think about this on a systems level, making sure that residents in our community have access to the best services possible and always thinking about how to improve those services and also the cost burden of those services. And to me, this report has helped clarify some of the questions we didn't have answers to in December. And what it points to, to me, is that if you are looking at this from a systems view, what's best for the community as a whole, it, based on what I know right now, it feels hard to justify moving forward in the way that's been proposed. So that's where I'm landing right now, based on what we're hearing. But I think it's been important, to me, there's dots between those conversations with the fire chiefs and the conversations with EMS and trying to connect the dots in all of these and figure out what, how do we allocate the limited resources available in our community to make sure the highest level of service is available in the, to everyone possible? That's where I land on it.
We, the majority of the commission attended a funeral last week for a fire chief. And I was reminded of those families of fire districts. And is there a place for improvement with them? Yes, we know that now. And they know that as well. But seeing, seeing those families and the tireless work they have done, firefighters, county firefighters going out EMS, not being paid well, but still doing this work. That, that was a message sent home to me. And it's, it's a passion, it's a, it's a generations. And like I said, there, there is room for improvement. But unless we're prepared to do both, raise, raise taxes and do this, I can't see doing something that's going to cause irreparable harm to those fire districts.
So I want to read, you know, one of the things that is missing in this report. The report's excellent. I want to commend you for the report. Provides us a lot of data. It also gives us some information, you know, with, that we can look at for improvement. But also, I mean, it just shows that we have a very professional, professionally around EMS team and fire team. So we also, what we're, we're looking at is the, is the partnership between two very professional organizations. I mean, I don't, you know, I've known the, most of these folks only the time that I've been on the board, except for the young men and women that, you know, out of our churches and other areas that we had come to know. These are two professional organizations that we're looking at. And in, on page 16, under your analysis on engaging these two together, you state in the study that if the county allows for the external companies to start providing ALS services, the county needs to enter into a service agreement. That the agreement should set key performance standards, indicators and minimum requirements on the level of care required. And that the county should inspect the new organization periodically throughout the year to ensure that they are providing such level of care as detailed and required within the service agreement. I know for sure that there is no one on this board that does not have the best interest of all of our first responders and will support funding and, and as a matter of fact, are pushing for increased funding in most of these areas. And we met before and we, we voted to do this. We voted to have medic reviewed and to see if medic was a fit within this organization to try to see if this would work. So this is not something that, you know, we would be doing with a, with a blind eye and doing as a guarantee forever. This would be, there would be requirements. And we would look at this and we review it and we would take your, your recommendations. And that's the way that I would be supportive of it, is being able to, to do it in that, in that fashion.
But just to be clear, the recommendation is not.
That's his recommendation.
That's right. Just want to be clear that that is the recommendation.
That is.
We're following the recommendations, the overall recommendation is to, is to not do this.
But one of the, one of the reasons that we, we hired, which I thought was the main reason, is to review medic because we had agreed that we would extend this agreement and to, to work together to make this work, to provide a greater level of service. And however you measure that, that was the intent originally. Now, we have received information on the entire county that gives us great information and gives us some caveats that we would have to watch and be very, very careful of. And for that, I'm very, very grateful. I'm not seeing any signals of panic or anything like that. I think that the cooperation, I think these organizations are professional enough, that this board is strong enough and professional enough and has a commitment to the, to people in Buckland County to, to take your recommendation on page 16 and put those parameters in there to test this specifically.
Going back, if we look at page 16 again, and help me understand this being a numbers person, 830 trips, right, is what was taken?
Eight million trips, yes.
And average trip is billed out at how much?
If you look at Fairview's, yeah, you have to look at Fairview's, actually what they receive, three.
Or, well, I don't, I'd like to know what they actually bill. If 800 calls at $800 is well over $3 million.
Yeah, they're not going to receive, that's nowhere near what you're going to receive.
Nowhere near what you're going to receive.
Absolutely. Once you bill, you're only going to click, there's a 66%.
That would be 1.6 million, 1.7 million.
Are you billing individuals or do you have?
You're fading away a little bit.
I don't know.
Good questions, but you're fading away. We can't hear the answers back here.
It's all about how they bill. It's all about what their billing rates are, what they're, you know, are they billing, or is it federal funded money that's coming to them? Is it nursing home money? Is it contracted money? Every bit of that was kind of looked at and included. One thing we do is work really hard, I do as an overseer of this, is to reduce everything to about 25 pages. Most reports I see generated are around 100 pages. They're so full of field that when you read it, you don't understand. We try to provide you data that one, explains the situation. But then it also gives you data that you can move even further, that you can take numbers and add things to, to see what that number is actually generating. That's what we do.
One, one more question. You brought up, and I don't know where you got your answers from. But Skyline basically told you that by Buckland County adding another ambulance to the area, that they lost their staff. We haven't put an ambulance on it. So that's what I'd like to know. Because that ambulance that's out at Ramble's used to sit in Skyline. We have not issued, put another ambulance out for service in Buckland County.
The, and again, address that, on this, on this report, we only interview who we have. We never want to live like it's ours in any way. So the only people that we actually had conversation with was Fairview, Skyline. We emailed for further information from the rescue squad, the county EMS director yourself. And I got a receipt to call from the county medical director. That's the only six people that we talked to. The reason we contacted those fire departments is when we looked at their raw data, we can actually see VIN numbers. So when we recognize multiple VIN numbers, we recognize maybe that they are running, we need to know if they're running on sonocanes. So that's what we recognized with those two. And when we called and asked, are you running multiple ambulances? And if so, how? That's the, that's the answer that we got back.
Well, I think Skyline really wanted to try to go up into the ambulance business. But it, it hasn't worked. And basically, the four, there's four, I think, fire departments that's going to come back to us or look at the money already.
All right, Commissioner. So we've had a lot of discussion here. So what's your motion? Motion to approve what? Could you be a little more specific?
A motion to approve that medic would be put on the roles, the radios would be turned on 700 service. And it'd be a five-year contract. But each year, we look at to make sure that they're doing what they're supposed to do.
All right, there's a motion and a second. We will take public comment on the motion. Let's go ahead and do that. Mr. Yellen, we'll start with you.
Thank you, sir. I know it's hard, you've been over in your mind. I've never seen such a complicated mess. Guys, all you got to do is look at garbage. Cities throughout the United States did one simple thing. The government bids against a private company. And whoever can provide that service the cheapest gets the bid. Your numbers are flawed because you don't know what percent of those numbers were Medicare and Medicaid. And how many times your Buckland County ambulances were taking people to nursing homes for dialysis? I know because I've spent a bunch of time there. The question is, can the private entity do it for the amount that the government gives them if they had a territory? That would keep you from losing 11 million to 18 million. Remember the numbers? So you better not pass anything today until you get all your numbers straight and break out what your private contractor can do. Because if the government could do it better, why aren't you all hauling the trash in Buckland County? It's simple as the nose on your face, guys. It's a simple thing. You set the criteria you want and you let them bid for it. Now you tell me what's wrong with that. If nothing, you want to try it, give them the territory. Which fire department, by the way, has the most problems with their ambulances and can't afford it? Talk to your private contractor and see if they'll take that territory. Because very obviously, Fairview didn't offset their costs. So if, if the private company could go in there and do it and offset the costs, guess what? Let the citizens of the Fairview Fire District have a reduction in their fire tax. Because if I'm not mistaken, Fairview has a ladder truck. And I don't think there's too many tall buildings in Fairview. And when the fire departments, if they decide to go under, they're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit run by a board. And that board will decide what they want to do with their material. It's not guaranteed to come back to the county. So let your private company bid against a section in your county. See what they can do. They might become more efficient, which would make you become more efficient. And God forbid that we save money and return taxes to the citizens.
All right, who's next?
Mr. Rex?
Thank you, Mr. Sheriff, members of the board. I'd like to give a little bit of advocacy for our group of Spanish-speaking people. I would like for this board to adequately fix this room for people to hear. If they need a hearing aid, they need it. If they need a speaking person, they need it. But it don't need to be interfering with everybody in the audience. I have no problem with these people hearing, but I don't think we're looking at something to help them out with. This is two times, and I can't even hear back there when they're speaking, so I've been patient not to holler out. So I'm addressing it up here for you to do something adequately for them when they come. They need it. Now, I think the issue regarding what you're investigating, we have bought near a hundred county care dollars. We're at the top of the list when we look at the state. We're in the top, not counting nursing homes. We need to be adequately counting what we've got here that we need when we call for an ambulance regardless of what that need might be. So we need to adequately do that. Retirement community is Hendersonville in Buncombe County, and it's getting more and more. So I think we need to be looking at that as well. The numbers that I'm hearing tonight in the conversation, if I sit in the fair, I know what I'd do. I'd ask for another investigation into this and look at everything. I don't think this gentleman's done a good job at all. Regardless, I don't think he went deep enough. I think it's just on the surface, and I think we need to look at it deeper. Thank you.
Mr. Holland?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. As I was here in November, I think I told you everything I could about medic. Mike and Mandy came and evaluated our facility. While they were there, we showed them everything that's as transparent as possible. Now, I know there's a lot of questions as to our intentions. Number one, our intention is not to take anything out of any fire district, period. We support our fire service. And Echo Allen, we saw that at Richard's funeral this past week. It's a very strong group, that we're a part of that group. All we're asking for is when an ambulance is out of its area, we use the fire department ambulance as an example, somebody has to respond to that call. Otherwise, it could come from a much greater distance. Time equals muscle if you have a heart attack. It's been said tonight, our paramedics sit in their truck to be dispatched. Yes, they do. That's an immediate response time. We operate under North Carolina OEMS. We do not operate under the National Fire Protection Standards. North Carolina OEMS says we respond within ninety seconds. That's a protocol here locally in Buncombe County. That's to be followed. Again, we're not, we don't want to take anything from Buncombe County or the fire departments or anybody else, but the fact, in the last few months, from December to today, we responded to three hundred and forty-seven calls, that should tell you the service is needed. Otherwise, we wouldn't have been sent. A lot of those calls were emergencies, a lot of them was not. But anybody that needs an ambulance, whether it's a written call or an emergency, should have an immediate response. Thank you.
We'll come back to you next. The lady in back, Ms. Culver.
Ms. Culver? I guess I'm about as old as L. Whitesides, and I went to school when we learned about economics. And basically, what you do if you want the strongest businesses, the strongest business models, is you have competition. You don't try to give some kind of... The difference is, these guys are independent, they're private sector, and you guys have the power. So you can create your own monopoly. You can make the rules and say, well, we, you know, we don't want you. They don't have that power. So you're going to win no matter what. I would, rather than trying to make a government decision when we don't have all the information and we can't have all the information, just let the market decide by, let the best business model win or share, either way. But another thing that bothered me about this is that it seems like ambulances are being used as a cash cow because we get federal dollars. Well, we have all these bumper stickers that talk about, you know, think locally and act globally or vice versa. And the federal government, Medicaid, Medicare, that is not a sustainable program, and you can't have a sustainable business model if you're depending on systems like that. And so I guess the bottom line is, government, the way I learn about government in this country is that you're supposed to protect the rights of people to excel. You know, we've got opioid prices, we just heard earlier today that there aren't enough people to help to abuse children, we don't have enough people to help, you know, victims are brave. And we're going after somebody who's trying to help people. And so I consider that.
County Commissioners, I just wanted to tell you that medic has been here a long time. One of our first things in Buncombe County, to show you just how we started, was we had two ambulances that we bought by auction. We got them paid for and we moved on to got a new one. But one of the first things that we did with medic was the children out of Mission Hospital, this was long before the hospital had their ambulance. If a child had to go down to Winston-Salem Duke, well, Buncombe County had a policy then, I don't know if it's still that way, that the parents couldn't go with the child, they had to fall along behind. We were private, and we made a ruling then that any child in Buncombe County that needed to go down for treatment to Duke, to Winston-Salem, anything, just children, we did let one parent go with that child, and we took that child for free. Now, I heard here that free's not always good. That's true. We didn't do it for free because we didn't know what we were doing. We did it for free, and I'm talking about we didn't file for any monies to be returned. And it wasn't because we were not qualified to do it either. I have worked thirty-six hours at a time on that ambulance. My husband worked for Buncombe County for thirty years, retired. This is our dream, and we've worked hard at it. We haven't seen this man, but he's going to compare us. We're also members of Skyland Fire Department. I've been a fireman for a long time. But I'm not running a fire department, I'm running an ambulance service. They're two different things. All of a sudden, the fire departments wanted to get ambulances in there, but that don't mean that they're a fire truck. If I bought a fire truck right now, I could fight a fire, but that's not what I'm in business for. We're two separate entities that need to be considered as two separate entities, fire department, ambulance service. Thank you.
Hi, thank you for letting me speak. My name is John Knowles, and I came here tonight after reading this document online because I wanted to share some information that I gleaned from it. I worked for Buncombe County as a full-time paramedic for about six years. And reading over this, I don't really have an opinion as to whether medic should be allowed to operate in the county. That's not why I was concerned about coming here tonight. My concern is, is looking at the data in this, I don't feel this is a really good representation of whether or not Buncombe County EMS is operating effectively. And some of the dating here, I think, is disconnected a little bit from the conclusions of this report. Some of the examples of that are in breaking down the data into ZIP codes. One of the things that stuck out to me is that the 28806 ZIP code has the highest population of residents, it has over thirty-eight thousand. It also has the highest call response, it has over nineteen percent of the calls that Buncombe County EMS is billing to. But when you go to the, when you go to the two spreadsheets on page seven, for some reason, 28806 ZIP code isn't listed there. So it doesn't compare the response rates in the ZIP code that has the largest population and the highest call volumes. But if you do go to the appendix, there's a large spreadsheet there, if you look at the bottom two rows there, that has the 28806 ZIP code. And when you look at the EMS response times over the last four years, it increased. In two thousand and thirteen, total response times were eight minutes, twenty-eight seconds. Now they're over nine and a half minutes in two thousand and seventeen. However, that same district, that same population, that same number of call volumes, when you compare that to the fire response, fire response has drastically reduced their response time. It went from over eleven minutes to under eight. This report doesn't talk and analyze at all, why is that happening? What's the difference between the fire response and the EMS response in that area? And I think that's one of the pervasive problems with this report, is that it's not analyzing the full picture. And it is a full and complicated picture, there's a lot of stuff involved. There's finances, there's discretion of resources. Another great example where I find fault, and no offense to you, sir, I find fault with this report is, it has some maps in there that are showing response times distributed geographically over the county. But there's no assessment of how the county is allocating its ambulances geographically. Why are we putting them where we are? Are we just putting them in the convenient fire stations because the county doesn't have the resources to house those? Or is there a better distribution of that that could be done? I want to make one last point, and no one's arguing, your time is up. Your time is up. Thank you, though. All right, anyone else? All right, seeing no others, we'll bring you back to the commission for further discussion. There's a motion and a second on the table.
I'd like to clarify the, I'd like to clarify the motion. What I'm hearing is that this would be a five-year contract with annual reviews, I'm assuming that Attorney Fridd would draw that contract with the proper parameters that would be in that agreement. I assume that would be accurate. So it would be with annual reviews to see that we're, that medic is meeting the, what's the word I'm looking at? Meeting the key performance indicators as listed on page sixteen that the county would be reviewing.
So it sounds like that's a clarification of the motion.
Are you okay with that? You okay with that?
Yes. I'd like to ask another question to clarify here.
Sure.
Are we talking about a district or are we talking about the whole county?
The entire county. Which, again, you know, the report recommends against this, and it specifically recommends against a county-wide approach to this. So I think talking about the parameters that are in here, you know, the motion itself is contemplating something totally different from what the recommendation is.
Back to us one second. The county, what I'm saying, county is, they're still based over here. And they're needed in the county, anywhere in the county, or they can move to a different area. Say, Fairview's gone, and they can move stage at the mall to cover for them. Both of them are gone. And that's what I'm looking at, not, if you put them in a district or just give them an area, they've got that right now, downtown Asheville. And that's, if it opens them up, that they, we can utilize them if we need them. That's if we need them. That makes it easier for them to call them if it's closer, they're the closest ambulance in that area in the county. This is, you know, one last point I'm going to make. This is not super complicated at all. The aim is to make sure that, you know, Buncombe County have an opportunity to have additional resources to respond at the time a nine-one-one call is made, and that the review of that is still going to be at that. And none of that's going to change. Nothing's going to change other than the fact that medic would be part of that, of that, part of that, under the surgery.
So I'll make my final... Well, go ahead, go ahead, Robert.
Okay. And I want to clarify that I think we understand everything. If Fairview was to move out, get a call, then the Talleys would move closer to Fairview to back them up, not to take that call away from Fairview. The other thing is, the final thing I'm going to say, is there's one thing we can do something about, and there's one thing we can't do something about. The one thing we can do something about is if we need to offset to help the fire tax, we can. We cannot bring them back to life if they're not there in time.
So I just, here's my final. So I think we're saying different things, though. Because on the one hand, we're saying it's only going to be when, you know, a district's ambulance is somewhere else. On the other hand, people keep saying, I want the closest vehicle to respond every time. Those are not the same thing. They're not. I mean, if we say there's a county-wide opportunity here, wherever they want, they can, just as the specific example of Fairview documents here, if they park their vehicle closer, then they can take, they can take that post and take them away from the, you know, the existing infrastructure that's out there. So I do think that we're, different things are being said here. And so, so here's my final comments. And I just, I also just want to say that, you know, to me, this question was never about the qualifications of medic. It's never been the question. I think it's an outstanding organization, and I have complete trust in their ability to do a great job. I think the question is whether embedding an expanded for-profit entity within the existing public and nonprofit fire district system makes the overall system better or in some ways undermines it. You know, Mr. Yelton made the suggestion that we, you know, we just did all this out, we look at privatizing the overall system. And while I'm not necessarily in favor of that, I mean, in some ways, I think the concern here is that a public system and with nonprofit fire district partners and a partially privatized system in some ways might be the least efficient method of all. Like a fully privatized system, you might get some efficiencies, but when you have all these different agencies that have already built stations, bought equipment, hired staff, and then you have a private entity in the mix as well, it may be a very inefficient system. So I'll just, I'll leave it at that.
In that way, it reminds me a bit of some of the difficult zoning decisions that come before us, where we have to think not just of the particulars, but also of the precedent that's being set. And I just will kind of close out my comments by saying, this isn't about medic or the quality of work that I'll do either, it's about the sort of systems lens and making sure that if we are moving forward, we're doing it in a way that benefits the system. So based on what I'm hearing from the way the motion's described, I don't see it passing as important.
The question I ask is, when we talk about this, and how are we going to monitor this or evaluate it on a annual basis? Because to me, we need to be more specific. It wouldn't be fair to the Talleys or whoever we do this with, because if we say on the one hand, we're going to do it countywide, and then we say we'll fill in here, there, you know, I guess, we need to be specific. We don't need to set up something as vague if we don't even know how to monitor. We don't need to set up something that's vague if we don't even know how to monitor.
Now, if I'm not mistaken, I'm pretty sure dispatch is the one that sends them out. It's not, you know, ambulance gonna be pretty, what they have found, is that correct? Dispatch will send them, correct? Okay.
Okay, so to Commissioner Whiteside's question, could we ask Mr. Frue, do you have an idea based on the contract that we've received? We've received in the past and reviewed a, a contract, I believe, with medic. Is that true? In the past, have they submitted something in the past?
They currently have a franchise for convalescent services for their, for the backup role that we've discussed this evening. There's not a formal contract. And it's just, this is an application for countywide response request. And Chairman Yoom made the point that I was gonna address, is that it would have to be incorporated into the EMS plan as a whole. It wouldn't be just a fill-in-the-blank unless the board wanted to make that specific charge.
So could we, could we agree to, to extend the contract tonight? And we don't have a contract in front of us. So we don't have a contract. But again, can we, can we vote to extend that contract and add the parameters at later date? So we're not talking about going through this whole thing again. Can we, can we?
I'm not sure how to answer that. I guess if you want to do that now, I would request some direction from the board where you want us to aim. Does that make sense?
And, and, no. And I think if we were talking about that, if we're talking about weaving something in, then we would need input from everyone, because we're, we're not experts on this. We don't know, we don't know the parameters, how to weave anything in, so I don't think it's fair to ask you to do that without input from the EMS and everybody involved. It's as much as, that everybody's all gonna work together, so.
I agree with that. The EMS system, that'd be all.
I might be, I might be missing some shit. I'm saying, they basically, they've said they're not really putting another ambulance on. They have an ambulance down here. It gets turned on. Okay, this ambulance leaves down here and has to go somewhere. That opens it up for Buncombe County, or it opens it up for Fairview. It opens it up for some of theirs. Right now, the fire departments that are wanting money from this board already have ambulances. So that's the ones that's gonna be coming in asking for money, whether we do this or not. That's the one thing that we have. He's not asking, all he's asking for is if not taking the district at all, if he's needed in Fairview, or if he's needed in Black Mountain, or, or wherever. If he's the closest, and he's not, if he isn't, he's not going. But at least they can see him, and they can talk to him. And if they're not the closest, they don't need to be going, going. I agree with that. They do not need to be going, leaving if they're not the closest.
In order to, if we're going to have an agreement in order to protect the county and Mr. Taller, we've got to have a contract.
Okay.
And I can't vote on anything until we have a contract. Something, you know, we've, if we're gonna do our fiduciary responsibility, folks, we've got to have a contract, something we can review and something we can vote on. But what we're talking about now, we don't have anything to vote on.
Okay, so I'm gonna take a final stab at this. I'm gonna try to take a final stab at this. And I think everybody on the board's gonna be okay with me taking a final. Okay, so, you're probably gonna have to answer this. From a procedural standpoint, did I assume the first when I changed it? When I, did he allow me to? Did it become my?
It's still Commissioner Friar's motion. He would have to handle that question.
So I, so I'm gonna ask you, I'm gonna ask you a way to, and I'm assuming this is an amendment, he is, I would ask him to amend his motion. You can do that, okay? So I'm gonna ask Commissioner Friar to amend his motion for a, a con, to direct staff, the county attorney, to bring a contract back to the commission that is a collaboration between medic and, and the facts that they've, they've given us on page sixteen, with key performance standards in it, to bring a contract back to this board, that we can vote on that contract. But, but that the motion be, we direct staff to do that. Are you okay with that, Commissioner Friar?
Certainly.
Okay. So we need a second on that motion.
Okay. So it's a, it's a, it's a very substantial amendment to motion, so it's basically not to approve anything, it's to, it's to draft the contract.
To draft the contract, yes. So we have to have a, we have to have a contract. And what I'm saying, and, you know, is that, you know, if it comes back to work, well, we'll support that. We need, we need to have a contract that we can, that we can do that. So we've actually moved this forward from where we were before, in that, that now, now we're gonna get something in writing back to us that we could, that we can put along.
Why don't we have input from all the people involved?
Yeah, we're directing staff to do that. Just for clarification, from my perspective, I would just ask that, we need to, should that's what, EMS directory, how many units would be to come into the EMS system? Because that, that would be the question. How many units of medic would be included within the EMS response system? Because their response system is a fluid thing. It's not just someone loses and someone fills a blank all the time. Sometimes someone's in motion, and they look at the, the geographic data to see where people are, to determine the best access to come in and make a response.
So I think to answer your question, that that would be part of the review with EMS, and we're gonna get the data from, because we can sit up here and talk this thing all night long. Commissioner Friar and some others may, that they're gonna have more detail on this, on where this is over there and over there. And I'm, all, all we're wanting, I believe the board wants, is to, and I'm not trying to speak for the board, but I think that we just want to make sure that our, that our, that our EMS is protected, and that people of Buncombe County are protected. And we're gonna be committed to both of those. But we don't have a contract tonight. So I'm saying direct staff to draw that contract up and bring it, bring it back to us in a collaboration between the systems.
May I make a proposed amendment to your amendment?
Sure, yes.
That staff address the, the issue of how loss of funding to local nonprofits, or how the loss of funding to the system would be addressed, and whether that would include raising taxes, or what other strategies are available. I don't see how, for, the way I would approach this is, those two questions are related to each other. So my amendment, my friendly amendment to you would be that that's included in instructions to staff.
Well, I think we're gonna, I think that that is, I think that that can be part of the review, certainly. So I would, I think I would, I think I would accept that. However, we must undergo legal, okay? I know, I told you I was gonna take a stab at it. I didn't say I was gonna pull it off. Have a lot? So anyhow, we've received information from one agency, and you're very professional. We appreciate that. But that, that's not, you know, total, total scripture, as I would say. You know, we have some other input that we're gonna have to receive, including what, but I, I don't want to scare folks into, into this, this tax thing, because we've, we've all, we all have a commitment to let your firefighters take care of it. We're going in budget time, we're gonna make sure of that. So, but we don't have a contract. We've gotta have a contract in all of these conditions, including what, what Commissioner B. Friar said, is, needs to be part of that evaluation. But we gotta have a contract, directing staff, bring that contract back to us, so we can, so we can vote on the particulars of the contract, you know.
So, you know, here, here's the, here's the challenge I have with, I mean, in some ways, I like this motion, but part of the problem is that this could be so many different things, right? I mean, it could be this open-ended, countywide, whoever gets called first, you know, we're, this entity would have broad discretion for how they want to operate within the county. Or it could be this extremely targeted, you know, this very small percentage of the county population, where the call times, you know, we'd all like to see them be a little bit better. That's a very small percentage of Buncombe County's population. So I feel like, you know, we need to give some, if we're gonna ask them to draft a contract, we need to give some direction on, are we talking about countywide, open-ended, or are we talking about, if we're talking about the recommendations of the report, and the report is, says, probably not, you know, probably not a great idea. If you are gonna do something, it should be very targeted, and it should be, you know, it should be just narrowly focused on these areas where, you know, some additional service maybe could help, but not undermine the well-performing parts of our system. So for, I'm not gonna support a motion to kind of craft an open-ended countywide system, because I, I just am not convinced that that's in the community's best interest, and I don't want to spend much of time on it. If that's, if that's the nature of the kind of contract you want to see, then I, I won't support it. If you were giving direction for a very targeted type of service, I would, you know, I'd at least be open to talking about it.
Okay, so more questions?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Targeted, that means we give him a little area. He's got one of them already, downtown Asheville. All they're asking for is that if there is an area that needs somebody, it don't matter if it's in Fairview, Black Mountain, Tomnay, Barnersville, wherever, if they can be utilized in that area at a time, that they can be called, not, not go to it. Dispatch sends them. All they're asking is for the dispatch to be able to send them, if they're needed in that area. Right now, they can't send them to them areas, and that's why the call times are more other than that. That's, that's all it is, is if they're needed, and they're the closest, and they can be utilized at that point, dispatch, 911, dispatches them to that area.
So what time is this? Any, any last comments? That would not.
Well, my last comment would be this. We said, let's let the staff take it and bring back to us what would be best for the system. I mean, that's what they're paid for, and they'll do a good job. We got the staff who will do it, and do it right. So let's let the staff take it, and then they'll bring it back to us.
Well, but let me ask you this. I mean, do you want, I mean, I'll, and I'll just be honest, again, there's been a lot of turf around this issue. This has been a very political issue, and always has been, you know, forever. So if we are asking the staff, including the, the fire district chiefs, to give us their professional opinion, I would not presume the outcome of that right now, in terms of a contract at all, or what that contract might include. So if we really want to ask, right now, we've asked an outside person, who doesn't have, you know, does not from here, is from the other part of the state, got some expertise. We asked him to bring this forward because, frankly, it has been so political in the past, and that's what I like about it. But if we are gonna ask the officials who are currently doing this work for their professional opinion, let's them, handcuff them to what that might be.
So is it, Chairman, is it okay if I ask medic a clarifying question?
Yes.
Could you come back up, Mr. Taller? So I would like to clarify what it is that you have requested from Buncombe County as far as your services. Can you very simply say that for the benefit of the board, as well as Mr. Frue in, in direction? I, you know, with all due respect to everybody on this board, we don't know anything about this issue. We're trying to balance the, you know, the, we're trying to balance this thing, and all of us want to provide the best service to, to the county area.
I understand that.
So can you just say what you said last time, very, very briefly? What you want, the service you would like to help Buncombe County with?
The way we function on a day-to-day basis is since we don't have a Buncombe County franchise to operate an emergency system, that literally ties the hands of the dispatchers.
Yes, sir.
Our 911 center dispatchers, and I welcome y'all to go talk to them every single day. We need to send an ambulance out here. Medic's got one sitting on Charlotte Street, but we can't because of franchise orders. So we have to send somebody past us or from a farther-away district. That does that patient or that citizen no good. The dispatchers know typically where we're at by talking to us on an old radio system. So if the CAD system is placed in our trucks, they can look on their computer screen and see where an ambulance is at if they need it. Now, let's give, I'll give you an example, and I'll use Fairview. If there's a medic truck riding through Fairview's fire district, and their ambulance is in service at the station, then Fairview is who should do that call. Same for Skyland. Our, our main station is in Skyland. There're seven ambulances sitting in the building. If Skyland's ambulance is sitting in quarters, that's who they need to send, is Skyland, unless Skyland calls and needs some help. That gives that dispatcher the option to send a medic truck that's already in Skyland. We're not asking to go camp out in anybody's fire district. We don't want to do that. Nobody can afford to do that. But there's a lot of times, and they're getting more and more as the warm weather happens, we see a lot of these overdoses in these children that were talked about tonight. We transport those people into back of our ambulances. Now, I don't want to not be able to respond to a heart attack on Longchelse Road, but they can send me to downtown Asheville to respond on the same heart attack. That makes no sense at all. That is not a proper use of resources. So again, we are not wanting to take anything from our fire departments. We strongly support our firefighters. Did I answer your question yet?
Yes, it does. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
I just got, I've been watching Keith here, and I think we ought to give him a chance to be the last speaker. I think he's agreed with some stuff and disagreed, and where you would stand now.
In summary.
In summary.
One, I apologize, I've been there for ten, ten rows, should be us in service. But that's the reason I struggle with that. No, thank you. You can.
Yes, I, it's not that I don't agree that putting ambulance in place. Yes, I do not, and you can provide a better.
Can you hear me?
Is it on? Make sure it's on.
Okay. It's not that I, I've thought all over since that. It's not that I don't agree that providing more ambulances is a better service, a hundred percent better. The more you put, the better off you are. It's just a financial reflection of that, and, and how it will affect you. That was my job in this report, as we say, like, we used the, the, in a PA seventeen thing standard. It's actually a stricter standard than the state standard, in Buncombe County's ninety-second out-the-door shooting time. We use a one-minute time in the fire service, so we provide the strictest standard that we provide you. And as an fire chief, my people are gonna be out the door at one in a minute, period. So it's a management reflection there. A little bit of a war story. I'm all about adding services. And as a fire chief, a lot of times, we work strongly to put financial as not a deciding factor, as if we can provide service, and then we actually make the decision to find funding to support that theory. I had four stations under my control. I had four stations under my control as a fire chief and one of my outlined stations, I put there because of the response time was about 18 minutes in that area. So, and that was meant, I, I put a substation there with two firefighters and was criticized because what can two firefighters with a fire truck do? Nobody really understood that I made that decision, it called the cardiac arrest. It was not the fire side, it was the cardiac arrest side. If I would put a station there, I reduced the time in that area to four minutes, 4.44 minutes if I remember correctly. Now, I'll tell you where I came from and where I commend you, and this is some of my shaking my head, is you're looking outside the box. The EMS director I dealt with at the time, I made the comment, if, if you will allow me to put one of your paramedics on a fire truck, we can now provide ALS coverage in that area in 4.44 seconds. I was told that it would be a cold day in a certain place if a paramedic ever moved a fire truck. That's the response I got from my government agency. So, I commend you for looking outside the box. And I'm, again, I draw back to, if you want to add more service, so be it, but it is going to affect you financially and that was mine. Now, one thing I will clarify too, that I heard with the zip code of the last five-year data, you know, and stuff like that, and EMS changing, the way you work with ABL system is you do this fast to closest human. If you have management involved with decision-making of response times, they may ship a piece of apparatus into a location to see how it affects the system. And that's how touchy these systems are, is I may would move a piece of apparatus into an area just to see how it affects it. There's a lot of speculation, but when you've actually moved the piece of apparatus, that's when you find out reality. So, if you look at the numbers over the last five years, they will change, but it could have been a management issue of moving a piece of apparatus to see if they can lower response time somewhere that affected the outcome, if that makes sense. And then, so that might be the Skyland issue, it could be the, the Asheville issue of EMS time went up, fire service went down. That could have been the fire department added an ambulance and EMS moved out further from that position to cover another area. So, you may be getting a fire service ALS on site two minutes faster, but EMS may have moved two minutes less, if that makes sense. So, it's all managerial when these decisions are happening and that's where it's really hard to provide a study, looking back five, 10 years, because the data changes. If you move a piece of apparatus, your data will change.
Thank you very much. Thank you again for all your analysis of this.
Yes, I'm glad.
All right, Commission?
So, one last comment and I will call a question, sorry, sorry. But, Mr. Frew, the 911 discussion from, from Medic, allowing access to be able to receive those calls, I think is the starting point for the contract.
I think so, we'd have to verify with the state, if we, if the county entered into a contract with Medic agreeing with them as a, essentially a county agency, that they have access to the rate, I think so.
So, it's a franchise agreement, so that would be the information that you have to compile with to come back to us.
So, county-wise?
If it's a franchise agreement, I'm assuming it's county-wise.
All right, let's go to this. So, we're voting on a motion to direct staff to develop a contract that will be brought back to the Commission. That's correct.
Call a question.
Call in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Call opposed, please say no.
No.
All right, that will pass as four to three. The motion to direct staff to bring a contract back to the Commission. Are you okay with your vote? If it wasn't clear, I don't want to, we talked about this for an hour, I want to make sure we got this right.
I'm the one that bring the contract.
That's right, that's right. Okay, that motion passes four to three. So, thank you all for everyone's input on this, it's an important issue and we'll talk about it again, we have a contract with one of us. All right, thank you, thank you all. All right, next time, which is going back to the item that Mr. Frew talked about on the landfill bid issue.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this board has previously approved opening of new cell of the landfill, the process in place before, there's been a deed assessment, the matter's going out to bid, we've evaluated the bids and want to have a formal approval by the Board of the bid's recommendation of the staff, Jim King was the director up there and our outside consultants at Verona Infrastructure Consulting, that the Board accept the lowest responsive, responsive, responsive bid of Young and McQueen grading of $1,187,770.
Make a motion to the.
I say.
All right, motion in second, questions?
My question is on town's, town's, town's recommendation, why wasn't it put on the agenda? It would just, did it happen on, was it a timing issue in terms of it not being on the agenda?
Two things, a timing issue, they had the approval, I think the bids came in in January. I heard yesterday that they were sort of some time crunches and I saw in the paperwork that Young and McQueen had actually extended the opening of their bidding, they wanted to have a contract at least approved and in place by tomorrow. Typically, I think I mentioned in pre-session, it's been the practice of the fire administration, county manager, to have in the budget ordinances a blanket procedure whereby the chairman or the county manager been signing contracts if the Board has already approved the project and approved the funding. So, we're moving away from that kind of blanket language in the budget ordinance and this is just a step in that direction, the formal approvals, formal bidding contracts. This would be more than $500,000 for construction and whatnot and more than $90,000 for, for business vertical property to the Board of formal approval.
So, there is some time sensitivity in terms of giving it, but in the future, in the future, these would just be placed on the agenda, perhaps instead of agenda?
Yes, sir, we certainly hope so. We're getting really close to having a good process in place for a chain of command, so to speak, approval process in place for this approval. That's part of what we're taking from the force management.
So, Chairman, just a quick comment, the reason I wanted this to be done in regular session and for Attorney Frew to say what you said, is so people know that we're not doing it what it used to be done before, that these bits are coming back to the Board for a vote, whether in consent, whether in, in the main meeting or not, it's not signed off by the county manager and the.
No, I appreciate that. And I'm all for it, it was even better if it was on the, on the posted agenda survey.
I just want to make one little tiny comment. On the Board of MSD and what they do, and I think it's really helpful, they show like the top three or four bids, so people can see the difference.
I don't know if we had time to put that on, there were eight bids that.
Oh, I don't mean now, but like in the future, you know, like the top three.
There were eight, just so the Board knows and the public knows, eight were a pretty tight spread, so they were all very good.
Hopeful to see that, yes.
And it was, it was helpful on the Board with her and not, it was not always the lowest bid that they went with, so, but it was good information to have, so I would agree with Mr. Frost.
All right, we've got a motion in a second. Is there any public comment on this motion?
I'd like to hear from Chip on this, take it a little bit, because he's the one that, you know, he's bringing it back to us and has an idea, so I'd like to hear from you, sir.
Well, it's very needed. At the landfill, most people refer to our landfill as the landfill. We have two landfills there, one is MSW and one is CND. And this project, the solid waste department has been working on for years and like Attorney Frew said, we're just trying to follow right processes and get it there.
And it's, it's basically bringing up through solid waste from construction to a new pit.
So, for what this is, like I said, we have two, actually two landfills there, one MSW, which is mine, and one is CND, which is online. And right now, the way that we're bringing in construction and demolition material, by the end of this year, our CND landfill will be at capacity. And we need to make this move now to develop a new cell for CND. And it's going to take approximately six months to develop that cell, so that's why everything is a time sensitive.
One more question and I'll get away from it. But, you sending some of our equipment to grade this out or reutilizing some of that in that way too?
Yes, sir. Right now, we have, the county has saved approximately a half million dollars by doing the work in our department. So, we have some various skilled people in our department that are working, they've been clearing and rubbing and prepping it and that's part of the cost of this project.
All right. Excellent. Mr. Yelton?
I'm not glad to meet you, but I've heard about you, it's a pleasure. Glad to have somebody from Bidn's down to the landfill, because he might take what I'm saying and consider it. I figured the CND was growing pretty fast with all the buildings going on. And one of the things that you can do in CND is all the wood can be separated and you could reduce your costs, because then you can make money out of it. There's a business on the river that's making and surviving on scrap wood and trees and shrubs. So, that will help you as far as extending the life of the new cell, I'm sure you need a new cell. The other thing you can do is separate all metal and that's can be sold and you can make money on it. When I first went to work at the landfill many years ago, some of you might remember that, I don't know if you do or not, but I found out we were paying $7 a unit to get our refrigerators free on the move, when all you had to do was have people pay you for it. So, that's another thing, you'll separate the metal out. Also, you can take all the concrete, brick block and re-grind it, you can put it in a pile and re-grind it and use it for data cover, or you can use it for stone for your roads. All of these things will help the overall life of the landfill and he knows that and it's hard to do, but you can get your people to do it, because I can tell you, when I first was hired, I ate my lunch at the landfill for about a year. And I never had a contractor refuse to do what saved me money and it's very simple to do, you just require that it be done this way and it can be done. And another point and question, and I'll send a note to you, Mandy, on this, I want to start monitoring the landfill, I, I look for your checks to be printed on the internet somewhere, I want to see the money income each month from the revenue and how it's spent, because you are going to have to cover your landfill up and I do have a strong interest in that, so whoever's responsible for that, please put me in contact with them, I'll send a note to you, Mandy, and I'd like to be able to monitor the person that has the information and talk with him on it. And I'll try to tell you how to run the landfill, that's his job, but it will extend the life of your landfill and give you some beneficial product. Takes a little effort, but it's something you should consider and I'm sure he definitely needs a new cell with what's been going on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. This landfill fund is a really big, I'm glad Don talking about this check on mine, you know, we want to keep up with it. You think seven people up there, there's a lot of eyes out here in the country. Anyway, I heard just a little glimpse, the lawyer, that's the way they are, they don't want to tell you the whole story, just a little bit to hook you, to get you back here. But, I heard a little procedure there about budget ordinance that Wanda used to do differently. When did that change? Tonight, when he said that, or is the procedure changed? Because if the procedure has changed, when did it change, when the budget ordinance changed? That procedure that you're talking about tonight? Now, I don't know, that's, that's what I sound, sounded me like with the attorney talking, so if I'm out of order on that statement, please help me, I'd like to know. This landfill brings in big, big money, this, this is big money and I've seen it transferred, and it might be what you referred to earlier, it transferred out of one into another pot of money and that money, you know, is bringing in 10 million, 15 million, whatever, transferring over, I don't know what the procedures are, but I just want to know if something has changed or it makes this different tonight and what that change is, I don't know. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Frew, would you respond to that question, please?
Simply the, the budget that we're still operating under, the fiscal year 18 budget, has a provision in it that if the Board has approved it and funded it, then it allows the county manager or, and the county manager or either of them to execute the contracts as and when they're approved by staff. Here, I thought that we're just double-dipping. I didn't have to come here, I didn't have to ask Mandy to put it on the agenda, but we are, times are changing and I just see it as good practice.
That's great, so, so question would be, so question would be, yeah, thank you for doing it. So, would it be a recommendation that we adopt a policy so that that is the norm? Appreciate y'all doing it tonight, although it was not required by general policy, should we, should we consider doing that?
I think so. I mean, it, part of, part of what we have been doing is just trying to get the management and budget people to work on systems, to get things to the county manager or to the chair for signature. This is just a part of the formal bidding process, it could probably just simply be a policy of county management to be in compliance with general statute, because the, the idea is just to follow the general statute.
Okay. All right, any further questions? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. And that concludes new discussion. Let me share the, the public comment. The time limit for individual comment to the Board is three minutes. If your time expires, you can leave any questions along with your name and address and the phone number with the county manager. Board members are not expected to comment on matters during public comment, this is the time for the public to speak to us. And the Board reserves the right to deny public address on subjects that we previously had public comment on earlier in the session. So, if you'd like to address the Commission, just let us know your name and where you live and who would like to go first? Yes, sir, you can go first and then the other man will go second.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Mark Diaz and I'm a member of the Board Directors at the Stanley West Community Center. And here is a report on our internet project. First off, I would like to thank this body for providing us the funding to provide this valuable resource to our community members, for who didn't have access to the internet. A little about myself, I'm a retired federal employee with 37 years of federal service, I have an extensive background in telecommunications. As such, I am the technical lead who oversaw the installation of the infrastructure, such as the optical cable and transmission equipment, which makes up our internet system. A little about our system, our equipment and access is provided by AT&amp;T. Our backbone fiber is supported by modern patent-switched transmission equipment and on-demand bandwidth. We have an enterprise-level Wi-Fi system comprised of two access points, which allows us to offer 247 service to our community. Overall, the system is managed by AT&amp;T for us, but I do monitor AT&amp;T's web interface, the health and status of our local area network. We officially came online at the beginning of this year, since then we have noticed a steady increase in the number of users. For example, for the month of January, we had 465 total user devices. As of 31 March, it has increased to 581. As the weather gets better, we expect that number to increase. In summary again, we thank you for giving us the tools to provide this opportunity to our community and look forward to your continued support and I'd be happy to entertain any questions. And also, I can mention that we have a few community members here with me who would like to share their story and the impact of this project on our community. Thank you.
Great, thank you. This study, the man will go next, Mr. Fisher.
I believe I'd like to have 10 minutes. How many people do I need to order to do that?
Okay, and so the eight folks, if you want 10 minutes, we can do that. There's eight folks who need to identify themselves, and they will need to give up their time. So if they raise their hand, they will not be...
Do they stand with me, or...
If they want to stand with me, that would just... Sure. No, good. Just if the folks who are up front, you won't be giving your own public comment, you're dedicating your time to this gentleman.
Okay. My name is Bruno Nalosa Ruiz. I am, I've been living in Buncombe County now for 19 years. As a Buncombe County resident, I definitely see the great community that we have. And I wanted to talk about the, some of you might know, recently, over the weekend, since Saturday morning, I myself have probably had a couple of gray hairs grown already because of the constant attacks that our community has had over the last four days. I'm talking about the immigrant community, and the great support that the community at large has had on, or has given the community. I'm talking about the immigrant community, I'm talking about the LGBTQ community, I'm talking about the African-American community, and the homeless community that have come together, along with other faith groups, in order to counter-attack this rogue administration set by immigration. And I believe that it is your responsibility as county commissioners to hold some sort of accountability towards this agency, since you yourself said we have responsibility for the Buncombe County community. I am here because there have been human rights violations in your own territory. As of today, Tuesday, the Supreme Court has also ruled that deportations due to criminal crimes is unlawful and it's unconstitutional. That being said, are you willing to let something like this go, something unconstitutional go in Buncombe County? I know that the sheriff is not willing to say anything on that behalf. I know that they're not in communication with him, so he says. But I know that in order for immigration to come and to the territory, they have had to have a conversation with either law enforcement, that'd be APD in Asheville, or Buncombe County. I am here to tell you that my community has not slept since Saturday morning. We have heard of many, many people in the Buncombe County area being distressed, and not talking about also these kids, children, who are in schools, and some of them did not even show up to their schools because of this. So what are you willing to do to set something straight? To give a message to this institution that has terrorized the community at large? I don't know if you have seen the streets at times over the weekend, but no one out there, construction workers have not been working in the constructions out there. Certain restaurant workers have not been out there. This impacts everybody, not just the immigrant community, not just the LGBTQ community, it impacts all of us. What are you willing to do for your people, your community? What are you, what's the message you're sending to these kids as well? We have some young people here who are looking at you, who will go to school tomorrow and will talk about what you're going to do in the future. I admire the fact that they're here, because these are the future, this is the future of our county. These are the voices that you're going to hear from in the future. I am tired of our community, and by fact, and actually, I want to say that this is, it's been going on since Saturday morning. It's been four days. We know that at least four people were picked up today. Over the weekend, we know of two other people in Buncombe County that were picked up. We have a group of people and community that is willing to step up with the community at large, that have been in Buncombe County and in Hendersonville. Hendersonville is by far the most people that has picked up immigration over this operation. This was an operation that was, that has been going on in the state for over a week and a half. And we're just now seeing the beginning of this. It's not going to be over, we don't believe it's going to end tonight, we don't believe it's going to end up tomorrow. What we do know is it might go up until Friday. How many more people are you willing to let go of your community? What are you willing to do, is my question to you? What are you willing to do as commissioners of a county that does not believe in this kind of harassment, does not believe in this kind of intimidation? And I'm saying this as a father, as a son, I believe some, most of you, not all of you, have family members. What are you going to tell your kids right now? There's some family members that have not seen their family, have not seen their dad for a couple of days, they might not even ever see them. And some of these people that we know of have no criminal record whatsoever. The amount of increase that we have seen over this, with these operations, and since this administration's has been rising highly, and there are so many violations that have occurred due to this power that has been given to this agency. We're talking about 171% increase in deportations and detentions of individuals that have no criminal record whatsoever. That is huge. That is way more than the past administration has ever made. So let's talk about some criminal, some criminal activity that the ICE has been making in our area. Let's talk about these violations that have occurred. That being said, what are you, taking consideration of the traumas that have been occurring on these community members, I can't, I can't even tell you how many people right now have been calling, have been reaching out, because they don't know what the next day they're going to come or bring. We've also heard that in the Buncombe County area, in the schools, there have been either rumors, or concerns about ICE being in the schools. We know that they're, this is not something that they can do, but we know that they also have been intimidating our people, our community. So I am asking you commissioners, what are you willing to do for this community, for these folks that you might even know, and might not even see them the next day? That's all I have.
Great. Thank you very much.
The three of us are faith leaders here in the community who would like to request to speak together, if that's okay?
Sure, you can each have three minutes. They can each have three minutes.
My name is Missy Harrison, I am co-pastor of Circle of Mercy congregation here in Asheville, and I live in Leaverville. We are here representing Faith for Justice, a group of faith leaders in Buncombe County. And we are here to read a statement that has been prepared by Faith for Justice on their behalf. The statement represents Reverend Tammy Forte Logan, Reverend Amy Cantrell with beloved community, Reverend Donatelli at the Cathedral of All Souls Episcopal Church, Reverend Nancy Sahested from Circle of Mercy congregation, and myself from Circle of Mercy, Rabbi Justin Goldstein, Reverend Sarah Wilcox, and Holly Roach Knight from the Transform Network. I'm going to let the two of them introduce themselves.
Rabbi Bad Shiva Mayiri from the Patsy Tula congregation.
And Brian Ammons, assistant chaplain at Warren Mason College.
Faith for Justice of Asheville vehemently opposes the ongoing use of immigration, customs enforcement, ICE by the federal government. These actions are devastating to our community across Buncombe County and western North Carolina, this state, and this country. We are calling on the city of Asheville and Buncombe County to publicly condemn the ICE presence and their use of manipulative tactics against residents in our county. Portraying immigrants and refugees as criminals and threats, rather than seeing them as beloved children of God, is immoral and un-American. We are called to love our neighbors as ourselves, and the criminalization and dehumanization of our immigrant siblings through ICE tactics and actions prevent us all from seeing their humanity, and we risk losing our own. It is immoral to track human beings down like animals in their places of residence, on their jobs, in their neighborhoods, while at the grocery store, and at their children's schools. Most of these community members are only deemed illegal because this country changed laws and policies to prevent them from remaining here after we refused them for our own purposes. Many have been here for generations, like many of us.
The reality of our history in the U.S. is that...
May I interrupt for just a moment, because I just, I want us to just make sure we're following our protocol, so let's restart and give this gentleman three minutes as well. Thank you, please continue.
The reality of our history in the U.S. is that this country's prosperity has been built on the backs of poor and disenfranchised immigrants who either sojourned here by choice or by force. As people of faith, we are called to care for those in need and love one another, and as leaders of this city and county, you are called to serve and protect all residents. We call on you to create sanctuary in Asheville and Buncombe County, and stop allowing our immigrant neighbors to live in a constant state of fear and panic. We implore you to continue to model the very best of our values and our common humanity. Thank you.
Just say one more thing. Thank you to Bruno and Seema, and the work that they have tirelessly done since Saturday, when these raids have begun, and the work that they have done organizing people going to the sites where these raids are happening, and documenting what is happening, and I'm just grateful for their presence among us, and for them calling us to be community together.
Good evening, chairman and commissioners. My name is Michael Harney. As some of you know me, I work at the Western North Carolina AIDS Project, I teach Spanish and AB tech and literature, here here to our immigrant population and those who are activists in our community. I feel like we've seen a lot of good information tonight, we've heard a lot of good numbers. I want to add a few more. You know my stance is all about needle exchange, about the vulnerable communities across the world, across our country and in our communities. So those who are incarcerated, those who are immigrants, those who are public sex workers, those who are men who have sex with men, those who are transgender people, those who are injecting drug users. And I still am going to talk a little bit more about injecting drug use in this community and the need for needle exchange. I know that it's a very costly concept, that we would fund needle exchange through our health departments, whether the Buncombe County Health Department, or all 85 county health departments in the state of North Carolina. The history of, the reason for needle exchange came from the early part of the epidemic, when about a third, historically, of all new HIV infections were related to the injection by dirty needles, shared needles, because of the inaccessibility to needles. And so we have been able to bring that down at a national level to about eight or nine percent, when we have implemented needle exchange programs comprehensively as part of harm reduction programs. In the state of North Carolina, I'm reading from the HIV STD hepatitis surveillance report by the communal disease branch, the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, said last year, it's actually 2016, there were 1,399 new case reports of HIV in this state. And we have about a 5.8% of those new case reports are related directly to intravenous drug use. So people got HIV because of a dirty needle, because they couldn't have access to clean needles. And that represents only 81 cases, which doesn't sound like very much, but one person getting HIV is unnecessary in these dates and times. And at the low-ball cost of $300,000, estimated by the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, the total lifetime cost of an HIV infection at about $300,000, if we could prevent three of those infections, we're saving close to a million dollars. I heard there's a half a million dollar savings from the landfill, and I appreciate that. I'm not asking for that much money, I'm just wondering if we can figure out a way to logistically and legitimately fund needle exchange through our health departments, to see that people need access to needles for no matter what. I said it the last time I was before you, and I'll say it again, that we all need a blanket of protection, so not just for the immigrants, and I certainly think we need a blanket of protection for them, but for people who need access to needles, who have needles in their possession, that this not be incarceration that we're looking at, that we're not going to see this as a legal issue as much as a public health priority. And I thank you much, and I'll see you again soon.
Mr. Chairman and commissioners, I'm going to lighten this up a little bit. I'm a resident of northwestern Buncombe County, and we love our mountain homes. It does have a few little setbacks, though. One of those being you have to drive 30 minutes to get anywhere, which is why we moved out there, starting with. The second is access to, up until recently, internet. And I'm a computer guy that went once since 1978, when I built my first home, I had digital computer. And if ever there was a community that fit the definition of digital deprived, Sandy Much was. I told y'all generously, gave us the grant, we've got internet there now. The children in the community could come down to the community center, they could get on the internet, get on the Google Earth, and walk the streets of Paris, go to France, go to anywhere they want to go. And definitely a benefit to everybody in the community. We've had the usage of the internet now, as Mark was saying, it's increased 10-fold since we first started out there. It's really done a good job for us. The community center also set up with the grant, we have a print system for people. And there, I know you guys all have access to the internet, it's hard to believe anybody today doesn't, but we have a lot of people who do not. We really appreciate your grant, and I think she's putting in for another, we just have to see that through as well. Thank you for your time, I know you guys are probably ready to go home, and I am too. Thank you. This is my wife.
Hey, I'm Diane, and hello, guys, how are you all? I just want to say, I am so enthusiastic about the kids in our community having the access to internet. I'm tutoring right now five homeschoolers that haven't worked on computers that much, and they are so excited about it because of y'all's contribute to our community. And also, we have GED students that are working very hard to get their GEDs, so that our community is better for everyone. So I just want to thank you all for my dear consideration, and think about us little Sandy Much, our community. The children are very excited, and we have one named Azia, and she wanted to tell you all, while I was writing up my little thing, she said, well, tell them we're having fun on the computer too. So thank you all so much.
I'm Barbara Basalo. I know nine people have signed up for the GED, AB tech, internet service that you have helped us get for the continuing of their education. I talked to two friends of mine this morning that are enrolled in the AB tech online GED program at the Sandy Much Community Center. Sarah quit school in her senior year, six months away from graduating. She no longer could stand being bullied. Bradley quit school in his junior year, he could not keep up with the rest of his class, and was too proud... He could not keep up with the rest of his class and was too proud to ask for help. I asked them how important having access to the internet educational program is to them. Their responses were as follows. The Sandy Mush Community Center is close to their homes. They feel safe at the center. It is, in fact, an old schoolhouse. They can study for six hours if they want to, at a pace that is comfortable for them. They study with other friends in the program. They internet one another. They use Facebook to talk about going to the community center to actually study, to get their GED. You've made that possible. They help, support, and encourage one another. There is always an educated volunteer to help them, answer their questions, and put them in a positive direction. They believe that the internet service provided at the Sandy Mush Community Center will help them achieve the education they need for a better future. They are setting an example that others will follow. Please, grant us the internet service needed for the future educational growth of our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sometimes y'all feel like the dog who chased the car. You caught it, you got it, man, you wished you had to caught it. Y'all solve the whole world problem. You're supposed to stop the federal government. You're supposed to provide immediate amnesty service to everybody. I mean, I feel sorry for you all. That's why I ask simple questions. I am looking for the checkbook on the internet. I also sent an email to Mandy about going into closed session. The reason I did that is because there hasn't been a tendency to hear client attorney privileges so much, that it appeared that that's what was going on, client attorney privileges. And then y'all put a little thing on your deal that I got to read and don't got me interested in it. And it said, "The policy of this state is that closed sessions shall be held only when required to permit a public body to act in the public interest as permitted in this section." That's 143318.11, and I'm sure your attorney knows it. And I looked at your agenda today, and you'll see April the 24th, 8:00 a.m., Commissioner will hold a special closed session per NCGS 14331811a6. I got excited. A 6 tells you the exact reason that you can go into closed session. And I want to make the recommendation, and he said he's always done it, when you announce that exact reason that you're going into closed session, summarize that reason, because there are six reasons, and the reason I want you to summarize it is, calling a closed session, the public body may hold a closed session only upon a motion duly made and adopted at an open meeting. Every motion to a closed meeting shall cite one or more of the permissible purposes listed in subsection A, which then entitles the numbers. So the bottom line is, if you will mention that and summarize it, you will educate the public. And you do have the permission, based upon the Institute of Government and another attorney's interpretation, you can do pretty darn well whatever you want to. But I think you all are trying to appear to be open and honest, and that would appear better to us in the public, because you get so much that you've gotta handle, and you cock that dog sometimes you sit up there, and you don't see what it sounds like out here. But I do want to second the fact that I think you need to look at your sound system. There should be a way to monitor the volume coming out, and you should be able to magnify that volume, because when you get down real serious, like I got eight seconds left, and you get down real serious and start talking kind of calm and nice like that, I'm over it, you can't hear a thing back in the back room.
Thank you. Yes, the young lady?
I'm wondering if I can give my three minutes over to this lovely lady?
Was she on the front row of the group that gave up her time? I'm sorry.
She was.
We cannot...
But did we use the whole ten minutes?
I'm sorry, we cannot do that.
I can give you...
Thank you for asking.
I'm gonna try to give her the three minutes.
Mr. Rice?
Thank you, good chairman and board. You're getting paid for you tonight, you know, you're earning your money. Did you hear that? You're earning your money. I appreciate all this work you guys did.
Hey Jerry, I couldn't hear you, could you speak up a little bit?
Don didn't say nothing, so I thought it was all right. Thank you, Joe. To a serious note, child abuse, elder abuse, or any kind of abuse is wrong. I lost a child early on in my marriage. We've been married forty-nine years, and we lost a child. I know what that is to live. My wife lost her dad to a murder. So she was fourteen years old. We took the mother-in-law, we kept her. We took a sister-in-law that had committed or tried to commit suicide. So I have lived the lives of what abuse is, but we got to rise above that. And it ain't stopped me yet, and it ain't going to, because I've got a little better trust in somebody other than the man, and that's true. So my integrity is what I got. Now, what I do to help others is all that matters. They don't know you care, nothing else matters. I think your staff will tell you that I've helped it as much as I give. I might give you a hard time or it sounded that way, but I give staff, I give helps, and I was still doing that, and I'm going to do that. So I want to point out something to you. There are three things coming. Mental health and physical health is going to merge. The hospital is selling, and that's $1.8 billion if you didn't hear. That might come on during the cheer. And the regionalization of DHHS and DSS is coming together, and that is going to be a meeting in April 26th at Western Carolina University. I want to see every one of you there. There's gonna be a regionalization meeting, and you ain't gonna sit there and tell me that you don't have nothing to say, or you're letting the state supervise you. You better get your goggles off and your colored glasses off and go through the real world. They're gonna fix to lay it out to you, and you're not gonna think about it like you have in the face and tell me you don't have a hand in it. You're gonna have a big hand in it, and I ain't heard this talked about in this room, about what we're talking about here. This has been going on since 2017, and they need to be a workshop right here in Buncombe County on this and what the results look like in Buncombe County. And the judicial system is gonna be another. Talk to me, call me, I'll hate you.
All right, thank you. All right, anyone else? All right, we do have a need for a closed session, so Mr. Frew, tell us the reason?
General Statute 14331811a3.
We can't hear you.
It's all...
I know, but you swing, you gotta swing both sides.
14331811a3, an attorney-client matter, and I think what Mr. Yellin's looking for is the fact that no general policy matters will be discussed. It's just to maintain the attorney-client privilege, not just make no action from the board except for direction.
Thank you. Conservation? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, we are going into closed session. We will return to open session, but we'll take it back to what we did.
Give him the slug. Is it done? Did you lose some back there?
I don't know.
I think it takes a little bit...
Do they understand the center we're getting here, the center we're leading?
I don't know, I would think so. All right, is there a motion to return to open session? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Seven.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, we adjourn.